Good evening. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees is now convened in a boardwork session on Thursday, November 9, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District, Mark Henry Administration Building, located at 11440 Matsky Road, Cypress, Texas, for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, October 9, 2023, regular board meeting agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As a Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. Audience members may not participate in the meeting outside the designated agenda items for citizen participation or public comment. Disruption of the meeting by any person, including the audience, is inappropriate and will be addressed by the board president or the board's council as a meeting parliamentarian. Continued or repeated disruption of any board meeting by words or actions may result in removal or loss of the privilege to attend the meeting. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting, as permitted by Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on the district website. They will also be available as video on demand on the district website following tonight's meeting. For the video to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. And I'm going to check my phone now. Mine is now off. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. Tonight, we have no Boy Scouts, we have no Girl Scouts, and we have no elected officials or representatives from their offices for this evening. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. The invocation, pledge of allegiance, vision and mission statement, remarks and recognitions, board comments, and citizen participation will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, November 13, 2023. At each open meeting of the board, patrons who have registered in accordance with the procedures established by BED regulation may address the board during the designated agenda comments, period prior to the board's consideration or action on the item. Unless the agenda item is otherwise rearranged by the board president during the meeting, agenda comments will generally be taken prior to each agenda item. For detailed information and instructions on registering to speak under agenda comments, please go to the district website at www.cfisd.net. I thank for the very first board meeting since we established the new procedures. We have no speakers this evening for any items on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. And, Mr. Secretary, I know you've had plenty of time to practice, and I appreciate that. That being the case, I will announce it once, but for each agenda item, I will not announce that there are no speakers on the item. We will now proceed with the reports portion of the agenda. 3A, the administration will provide an oral report on the construction contract compliance audit performed by Weaver &amp; Tidwell, LLP. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Before I turn it over to Daniel Graves from Weaver, I just wanted to remind the board that you approved a construction audit being performed, a construction contract compliance audit at the June board meeting. The district selected Weaver to perform this audit because they actually performed an audit for us back in 2015 where they looked at the processes and procedures of the facilities department, as well as if their proper internal controls were in place. So they are already familiar with the processes and procedures within our district. So I'd like to turn it over now to Daniel Graves to talk about the construction contract compliance audit.
Thank you very much. So, yes, as she mentioned, I was actually the one that did that audit back in 2015. So I've been around the district for a while now, worked with my counterpart and colleague over there on several different issues with Texas school districts and construction compliance in particular. So our audit, just to give you a quick background, some scope, look at the procedures performed and then the results of those procedures, this will be a fairly quick presentation because it was a fairly simple, straightforward audit for construction compliance. As Karen mentioned, the district thought it was prudent to have an external compliance review. That's often, we recommend that, as part of just the general health and welfare of a construction program, especially one as big as this district has. We selected three projects to review, and you'll see them there on the screen. The criteria we used for the selection, we wanted to look at projects that were largely complete so we could have a good idea of the total contract and performance over the total contract. We wanted to look at large contracts, again, because that's where a lot of the money lies from the district and where some of the risk is. And we wanted to look at different architects and general contractors. So these were all large, near substantial completion, where we expect the project to be completed and retainage to be released in the next six to 12 months. You'll see there Transportation Center 6, Sprague Middle School, Rochanan Elementary. See there the contract amounts, $26 million, $66.9 million, and $33.2 million. And then we also included there for you the background of the architects, the general contractors, and the number of competitive bids that were solicited for the selection of these projects. That will become more important as we talk about other elements of the scope. So the scope and objectives, you'll see, we wanted to focus on two major areas of compliance. One is the district's compliance with Texas Education Code on how these projects were selected, or how the vendors, the contractor, the architects were selected as part of that process and insurance that is in compliance with Texas Education Code. And then we wanted to look at, the second objective, Objective B, is the general contractor's compliance with the terms and conditions of the contracts, the change orders, and the change proposal requests. So those were the two major elements that we looked at as part of our audit procedures. Through that Objective A, really the district's compliance, the things we really dug in and looked for as we looked at the procurement of these three major projects were ensuring that the competitive sealed process was utilized according to Texas Education Code standards, then that those RFPs included relevant provisions for inspecting, testing, construction, verification of services, and that the construction projects complied with, in that RFP process that's dictated by the Texas Education Code, that there was selection criteria published, estimated budgets, project scope, that there was an appropriate notice for the request of proposal, that the facilities teams, the evaluation team over those respondents, that they ranked and evaluated each proposal, and that the selection criteria used for the ultimate selection of those vendors was best value, not necessarily lowest cost, but best value, and that is in accordance with the Texas Education Code and Texas procurement standards. The results of those procedures and all of our testing, we had no findings identified as part of what we, all the audit procedures performed. Our next objective, Objective B, was around determining whether those contractors were in compliance with the contractual requirements. Now, these were all lump sum bid, so there were no, there's several different methods by which you can execute a contract. The district has chosen lump sum, and so we didn't have a ton of other different contract compliance criteria, but there were a few things that we really did look at and we wanted to test as part of just a risk-based approach for the district. One is that any change requests were approved or evaluated, considered and approved appropriately. So there weren't any cost increases to these projects that weren't thoroughly vetted and approved by district personnel. The second was when we wanted to look at subcontractors and making sure that the way these general contractors selected the subcontractors was appropriate, that there were a few different things. One, that they had fully executed agreements, so actual contracts between the general contractor and the subcontractors, that they were signed by the appropriate parties, that the subcontractors were separate entities from the general contractor, so they weren't self-performing work with like a similarly named entity, and that the people executing those contracts on both sides were not district employees. So we wanted to look for related entities to district personnel. And we looked at key district personnel, we looked at the key personnel of those companies, and did some checking to make sure that they're, as best we could, identify any related parties. And then the next biggest thing we wanted to look at was prevailing wage rate. And so the district had in its contract with the general contractors prevailing wage rate requirements to ensure that the workers on, performing the work got paid fair wages. That's important to the district. We wanted to make sure that the general contractor passed those requirements on to the subcontractors. And so that was very important to us, is to make sure that not only the general contractor was playing by those rules, but also they required their subcontractors to do that. So we looked at all 178 subcontract that were part of these three projects and validated all those things, and you'll see as the results, we identified no findings in the performance of those audit procedures. So with objectives A and Objective B, very clean audit, very clean on multiple levels, both compliance from a contractual standpoint and with Texas Education Code requirements as part of the procurement of the project. And with that, I can just open for any questions from you.
So I'm going to look to my right for comments or questions. Scott?
Yeah. Thank you very much. Great presentation. Unfortunately, I couldn't hear some of it because the audio is, even though you're right there, it's hard to hear some of it. So you may be able to answer his questions I'll ask again, just in case. How often do we perform these type of audits? Karen?
Yes.
This was the first one performed of this nature. We've done several different kinds of audits. As I indicated, we did one where we reviewed the processes and procedures within the facilities department and making sure we had the proper controls in place. And then, actually, Blake Legler did a follow-up report from internal audit and did that, I believe, in 2018 or 2019, Matt. And then we did this particular audit. So what we've done is we've selected different type of audits to review the facilities and construction processes.
And I'll share that we also shared our audit program and plans with Blake so that if the district chooses to perform similar audits in the future, he can use, leverage the work we've already performed from a planning perspective to go do those.
So I'm guessing you're a professional auditor, that's your job, right?
Yes, sir.
How often do you recommend that we do these kind of audits in a district our size?
From a district your size, it really, it's a little bit complicated in that we recommend a risk-based approach. And so it would be necessary to accurately answer that question, to look at your entire building program, to look at where the risk lies, and do sort of a risk assessment, to then determine the appropriate nature, time, and frequency of those. So I can't give you a solid answer now, but I would recommend that the district sit down and look at the total building program and plan, and then make a decision based on, you know, assessing the risk of the different projects, types, scopes, complexities. There's a lot of different factors that would go into that.
That might be a good follow-up item for us to look at that and to determine when and when we need to do more audits, what type you recommend based on size of your audit and everything. So, thank you.
And I will tell you, Mr. Henry, that I've talked to other school districts, and a lot of times what they do is they try to do something similar of this nature with each bond authorization, to make sure they've done it with each major bond authorization. So, for example, to 2019, and then if another one happens, we would do something similar.
Nadla?
Thank you very much. It was very interesting to see an audit around construction, as it was the first. And actually, we attended the Sprague Middle School dedication ceremony this weekend, and so I wondered if that one came in with the least change proposals of all, because there was some banter about when Roy came to work in the district, how the Satterfield and Ponteeks, their owner was like, let's talk about change orders, as we don't do those. So I hope he came in with a record of the least of any of them on the building with his name on it. So I do have a couple of questions. First of all, the, one is very particular to this, and one, maybe one is a little harder to answer, but in the selection criteria, I've asked that question before, so you did not look at the rubric itself and qualify that against any other entities or organizations for the actual criteria? How much was relationship with the district before, or how much was previous work in the district, or anything like that? You just literally said, whatever, our rubric said that we followed our rubric. Is that right, in the selection criteria portion of the review?
That is correct, yes. According to the Texas Education Code and the requirements, there's a requirement for a rubric to be set, an evaluation matrix as part of the publication of the RFP, and so it's actually included in the published document out to the general public to respond, and here's the evaluation criteria. And so that is...
Right, but it wasn't, you didn't, like, the, how we chose to value certain things wasn't part of the audit, just that we followed the one that we publicly proposed out there?
You're correct in that statement, yes.
So best value, then, is what TEA requires, but there wasn't any evaluation of actual best value through the audit, just that we followed our idea as a district of best value?
That is correct.
Correct. Do you have experience looking at other districts' rubrics, and do you have any way to compare, like, if you see all categories on ours that look different, or?
We could do that, yes. I mean, I do construction audits year-round for lots of different entities, school districts, universities, other public entities. So we could do a comparison of records that we have access to. We weren't asked to do that as part of our scope, but that is something we could do in the future if the district wanted to choose to ask us to do that. Yes, we could.
And that leads me to my second question. So I think your only public entities, and I really was a little interested in private entities, but this price per square foot of how we construct an education, I think, has been driven up and up and up in the market, or I'm think, again, you have, I'm asking an expert, I'm saying what I think I know as an educator and trustee, okay, that we basically, in the, because part of the pricing takes the region, and in the region, there's like, I'll tell you the architects, because we literally have used them for a lot of buildings, and so there's a small pool of people, and each time they're required to say, oh, what's the prevailing market, what's the prevailing price per square foot in the market? Oh, okay, and then we set off of that. So I would like to know, in universities outside of our region, or in private entities, what is the typical price per square foot? So let's say an oil company wanted to build something at Eldridge and I-10 versus like our, this building we're sitting in, at the price per square foot of those buildings a comparison?
So I don't have that data. I wasn't prepared to answer that question, so I don't have that in front of me, but I can tell you that it does matter what type of building. So an educational space is a very different price per square foot than, say, an oil and gas company or an office building, and for that matter, the administration building's got some different requirements than an administrative office. And so it really does depend. We look at a lot of stuff in this region. We've actually done some audits for some other school districts in this region. We work and do some for some major hospital systems here as well. And to really try and compare a hospital system's price per square foot to a middle school, it's not really a fair comparison, I can tell you that for sure.
Right, a hospital's so high-tech, but that's why I thought of an office building or something less techy.
Well, but even if you look at educational space, there's so much technology that goes in education space nowadays, that it's not necessarily direct one-to-one cost or from a price per square foot percentage, right? And then, you know, office buildings don't have locker rooms or showers and some of those things, and some of them, maybe even the restroom facilities, maybe not as many of those. So trying comparing price per square foot, you could get, you know, relatively close maybe, but it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison.
What would be the closest comparison of something that's not educational in the region that we could compare to?
You're probably in, like, an office building space, something similar to that.
So do you have an idea of a price per square foot of an office space versus us?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay, I'd definitely love to hear that information, because that's something I've definitely heard, kind of looked into since 2015, and there was definitely a suggestion that we're going higher, and even the quality, like, the depth of the requirements of the foundation, and the, I know we have to build strong facilities to protect children, protection of the children, their safety is critical. So I'd be very interested, sorry, I would have probably could have asked the question ahead, but you guys are outside presenters. The next question I have is about subcontractors. So we had 178 subcontractors. Is there any digging into who, the relationships of who the subcontractors purchase materials from?
No, there was not.
Any other relationships besides those subs?
No.
No, okay.
We audited the general contractor, our audit procedures did not extend down to the subcontractor. So, no, we did not look at...
Is that a typical practice that you can do? Do subcontractors not have to allow you that information, given that they're not the person who contracted with us and it's not in their terms? Or is that in the terms of our contract that we could find out who's buying different materials or construction materials and other things from, because we do have some cozy relationships with vendors in our system and the political system of our district, and so I'm super interested in understanding if we could, if we wanted to, get that information?
I'd have to go back and look at the contracts. Typically, there's a right-to-audit clause in the contract from the general contractor to the subcontractor. That's a typical term. It could be something that the district would want to require in the future, you know, require the general contractor to include in their contract with subcontractors that the district has the right to audit them as well. So I'd have to go look. I would tell you that in all the years that I've been doing construction audits, which has been pretty intense over the last decade, that I've never gone down to the subcontractor level to audit that. Not to say that we couldn't, I just, it's not a typical audit procedure from an owner's perspective to audit down to the subcontractor level.
And our right-to-audit clause is specific to the general contractor, not the subcontractors.
Counsel, that's something I'd like to see us consider. I think she's not there, but I'd like to see us consider if that's an option we might have in the future in our contracts. Let me ask you one more question. I don't know all the terms, but I do know, I talked to trustees across the state, and I know one down in the Elvin region. They changed their bid process to be sealed bid straight to the board, but there was a different, I'm not sure the exact term that's different. What kind of practices have you seen that have gotten people lower prices, or, you know, have you, what have you audited to see ways that any school system was able to really maintain a control or access in getting bids?
Accessing, getting bids, I think, you know, you have to follow the Texas Education Code requirements, right, with the public process, but there's two different contracting methods that are most common that I've seen. One is the process that this district uses, competitive sealed proposal, which it's, that's the bid process, but it's a lump sum price, which is, this is the one the district uses. There's also another method called a construction manager at risk. And so what that does is it sets a guaranteed maximum price, but that doesn't mean that that's what's going to be charged. However, there's positives and negatives to both, and it's probably much more in-depth conversation than we have time right now to do. But it is much more project management-intensive to have the construction manager at risk. So you might have, it can be a trade-off, right? You can have more personnel costs to manage the project, more payroll cost, which is a very much longer-term cost than a one-time lump sum price to have, you know, a loaded price that way. So there's definitely positives and negatives to both, and they both provide different levels of control. Ultimately, you want to make sure you have buildings that are safe, that educate children, and are good for the community, and that's the end goal. They both do achieve that. It's just a lot of times a preference, and a lot of that has to do with the administrative burden over one than the other.
Have you, has there been any comparison of really, if there was any savings to the second, especially given the size of our, the high-quality team we have, really, as far as that whole ability being a manager at risk?
I...
Does it save people money or not?
It has the potential to. You still have change orders, you still have use of contingency funds and use of allowances, and you still have overruns and you still have delays. So I've seen it save people money, and I've seen people really blow the budgets on it, too. So it's kind of hard to say, oh, yeah, well, this one saves money and this one doesn't because of, unless you did two exactly identical projects with, you know, everything being equal, you can't really compare the two.
Well, excellent, thank you. You've, it's great having an expert in the room from an audit firm, and I definitely appreciate your answering. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gilbert?
Okay, thank you for doing the audit, much needed. Matt, so Roy always answered this question and everything about logistics and supplies and stuff, and of course, a couple of years ago, as probably you know, doing construction audits, it was a hassle getting everything in on time, and we were quite fortunate, I believe Roy made a note of, we had ordered supplies ahead of time and everything was not backlog like many other places. Are we still experiencing that downfall, or are we back on board pre-pandemic?
I wouldn't say that we're pre-pandemic, but think the market's starting to kind of level out. There are still some, for a while, switchgear roofing systems were really long lead times, but that's kind of started to level out now, mechanical equipment, it's started to level out.
Is that the same thing you're seeing also when you do your audits, as far as when you do your audits in timeframe and stuff like that?
For the most part, yes. We do see, especially in some of the more commercial contracting, that people are still buying a year, year and a half ahead of time.
Good.
And that could be on a number of things. It could be on raw materials, but it also could be, you know, modular desk systems. I was at a client three months ago, and they've got a warehouse full of modular desk systems because they had to buy it now, otherwise they weren't sure that they were going to get it.
Get it later, right.
And so they are storing materials long-term still, but it is starting to level off and things are starting to get back to a better supply chain situation for builders.
Right, and that's...
Doesn't mean costs are going down, it just means that you're able to get the expensive stuff on a shorter timeframe.
Right, and that's something to consider in the upcoming years and stuff. One other question, Nadla kind of hit it on a little bit. So when you're doing other school buildings similar, do you do them in-state or nationally, or just in-state?
Both.
Both. So when you did our audit, how do we compare to some of the others you had done in a comparable fashion?
When you say, how did you do?
How did we fare compared to some of the other audits that you did?
Normally, I have findings in an audit. I didn't have any in yours. I mean, that's the simplest comparison I can...
Yeah, that's what we want to hear.
I had no findings here. Typically, we have some findings and have some audit adjustments to various terms and conditions, but that's also based on the specific contracts.
Right.
The lump sum contract proposal, you know, has, doesn't have as many criteria to audit against because it's just a lump sum, whereas when you start looking at construction manager at risk contracts, there's a lot of terms and conditions within that contract that you have to pay attention to, so...
And that's where I was getting no findings, and so it's just a reflection of, I wanted the audience to know on the job being well-done within our administration and everybody that works for them and stuff, so...
Yes, I think it is a good sign based on your internal project management team, but it's also a very positive reflection on those general contractors.
And that's where I'm getting at, so. I just wanted you to say to make sure that it wasn't me like that, though. Anyways, thank you for your patience and your audit there, sir.
Thank you.
Going to my left, Lucas.
Regarding the lump sum approach and the nature of change requests, what was the, what questions are asked regarding change requests? Are we following our own change request policy? How did you look at that?
So a change request typically needs to go, to be evaluated, right? The contractor will send a request for information, and there'll be a response from an architect, on the architect and the project managers evaluating. That could be, a change request could be from a number of things. It could be a, we know this is how it was designed, but really functionally building it that way is difficult or not practical. For instance, I have an audit project that I'm working on now, and they scrapped an entire $130 million building plan and started fresh because the architect design didn't meet what the contractor could do. The tolerance thresholds for error were too small for practical construction. So it could be something from like that into, hey, we, you know, we said we wanted this type of material on the flooring, but we've changed our minds, and so now we need to do a change request because we like the way this looks better, or we've decided that it provides a little bit different functionality that we think's better. So there could be a number of different reasons as the catalyst for the change request, but really looking on, is it, is it a valid change request? Is it really a change in scope, or is it any other factor? And really critically evaluating it, that's really done by the architect and the project management team, and then making sure it's approved. management team and then making sure it's approved by all parties. And there's an approved change order, which is essentially a contract modification. And that that's in place before the work commences, before that change in work commences. That's what we looked at, is to make sure that that process moved along accordingly. We didn't provide any value judgments on, you know, we're not architects. We don't, we couldn't provide a value judgment on whether that's a valid change order or not. We're relying on the architects to perform that job.
Matt, directing towards you. Do you have a sense over time or when we're looking at our construction costs, are we seeing change requests within a certain range that are acceptable? How does a district manage that and think about that?
Generally, for a CPR change proposal request, it's going to be like Mr. Gray's mentioned, it's going to be an addition, a change that the district or the end user wants. So what happens is we will request the change. So decided we want to put a laminate flooring instead of carpet. We'll request a quote from the subcontractor or from the general contractor, who gets the quote from the subcontractor, who runs it through the architect, who validates the cost and gives it to my team to validate the cost and then, only then do we execute the CPR. So I'm not sure I'm answering your question, but are they reasonable? Yes, before they're ever processed, our architect, our A and E team, whether it's a mechanical CPR, plumbing CPR, our architects and engineers review it to make sure the cost is appropriate and according to market. And then it goes through my team and then we review it to make sure it has enough backup and support for us to justify the CPR. So all the CPRs are well scrutinized before they're processed. That's not a change to contract value. That would come out of contingency. So it's already included in lump sum contract.
Thank you. You answered my question.
And I'll tell you that there weren't a large number of change orders in these three that we looked at.
Where I was kind of going was, you know, do you see trends over time? And if you're saying lump sum and it's embedded within the contract, then I think that means you know what the range of change orders should be, generally speaking.
We do. And there's a difference between a change proposal request and a change order. A change order is a true change to the value of the contract or a date within the contract. So the change orders that were reviewed on these projects, I believe one is a substantial completion change and one was adding air conditioning to the bays at the transportation center because we had done that throughout the bond in the other transportation centers. So our architects, MVP teams review all those change orders before we ever execute them.
So, very good. What I'm hearing is that you've got a control in place.
We have controls through our A and E team and our project management team for all change proposals and change orders.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, sir.
Debbie.
A few comments before my question. As someone who's built two homes, I know that a lot of times what looks good on paper, and when you see it starting to come to fruition, doesn't always look, work the way you planned it. Because I've been there. But more importantly, I, in my career, I built two credit union branches and renovated our main facility twice. And I was kind of blown away when Roy said it as dedication, no change orders, because I've never done a project without change orders. Because again, what looks good on paper to the architect and you think is going to be functional, when you start to get into the process, it's not always functional. So you do have to have contingency for those kind of things. So I can easily see how that happens. And you know, in my, Natalie, in my mind, I still can't see comparing building schools to building an office building because they're so different. And building an office building compared to building a financial institution or a hospital. So I can see how we, you know, it's not comparing apples to apples. Question, were there, I don't know if this was in the scope of your, of your audit or not, but did you find any projects that were over budget?
No, we did not. We only looked at the three and.
Okay. Did you find any that were under?
It's a lump sum proposal, so the cost is the cost.
Right, right. Okay.
There really is no over or under.
No over or under. Okay. But we do know that sometimes there can be overages.
There can be.
Right.
Ms. Blackshear, I think you had a good point. When you're building a school, you don't compare your square footage cost to an office building. But we can get a regional square footage analysis if the board would like to see that, to show what our square footage cost was for these projects, what current square footage costs are for projects that are being bid now. And I think the board will see that we bid these projects at the right time. And if you look at, I think I shared the information with you, Mr. Henry, if you look at the cost between elementary 58 and 59, just based on the market, the square footage cost went up and that is inflationary. So we can get a regional comparison and it really is better to do it regionally, within the state and probably in the Houston area, and get a square footage cost comparison for elementary, middle, and high schools.
Because it's going to be more expensive to build a school in the hill country, I would think, than it is here in Harris County.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's how the regional estimator, so we have, we actually have project cost estimating tools and we have regional adjustments based on ZIP code. And we have to plug in the regional area when we do our cost estimates, when we audit those for clients. And so we do it based on local region.
Thank you very much.
Julie.
Thank you. We appreciate the thorough discussion. And clearly, Mr. President, the board's request for a construction audit in June was timely because there's some good questions around our 2019 bond program. And I think the timing is very good as we entered the last few, last phase of this, of this bond program, that this is very timely and very comforting to know that when we look at these three projects as part of the bond program, that they were, that there were no findings and that they are, that we have followed the processes in place. So I really don't have any specific questions for you, sir. But Karen, I do have a question regarding, because there's been some discussion about the lump sum method of contracting that we utilize. Can you, I believe this to be true, but can you confirm, is that beneficial for us when we are working on our bond sales? That we can coordinate the sale of our bonds, the amount needed with the amount of the contracts on a project basis?
I mean, I think I know what you're asking there. Is that you're wanting to know the fact that we kind of know what that cost is going to be. It helps us to better plan out maybe the, are you talking like the tax rate and everything else associated with the bond sale?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, we work real closely with Matt and his team to look and see, you know, what the, what the typical cost is going to be. But then Matt, I believe, they build in inflation and everything else like that. But what we then do is once the, I guess, the bond committee comes up with the different projects, we work to look at how much can we afford to spend with the minimal impact on the tax rate based on the phases we think will occur. So if there's, for example, six phases, we look at about what the maximum is that we could sell in bonds. Then in the past, Roy, but then now Matt, he would go look at that and determine how much is reasonable that, or what projects could go in there based on what the community wants and what we need, but also falling within that scope. In addition, we make sure that, for example, technology, that is paid off sooner because the life of technology is less. So we make sure there's not too much in any one phase because that has an impact on the tax rate. So those are all the things we take into consideration.
Okay. Thank you. I think, in my mind, and I think that's great, that utilizing lump sum contracting is beneficial. Matt, would you agree?
I do agree that using the CSP method, which is essentially lump sum, is beneficial. We had used CM at risk in the past and we got away from using CM at risk because we found that our projects came in at a higher cost.
That's good to know. That's good to know. And I think, you know, I think based upon some of the questions that are being asked, it may be beneficial for the board moving forward to maybe have a session on, and we've done this in the past, when we wrap up a bond program, a review of the program of the projects. Were there any project, let us know if any projects did come in, well, they can't come in over budget because it's a, it's a lump sum and it's a fixed contract, right? So maybe just, when we do that review, I think that might be helpful in answering some of the questions that we're hearing. Would you agree?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. The only other comment I would make, and I agree with Debbie's statement that comparing K through 12 construction to other industries is very difficult. We've mentioned a couple of times, we did have the dedication for the Roy Sprague Middle School this weekend and it was amazing. And what we heard from experts from all over is that Roy Sprague, as our former COO and associate superintendent, is nationally recognized for his expertise and for his integrity. And I think that was something to, that we enjoyed celebrating, but we want to make sure we remind our community that we have had very strong leaders in this, in this position and we continue to with Mr. Morgan, that we will maintain the highest integrity and accountability to our taxpayers.
Thank you for being here this evening. I understand you drove in from Austin.
Well, I actually flew in from Oklahoma last night, but I'm driving back to Austin after this meeting. So thank you for having me.
I also want to say thank you to my colleagues. I requested this audit and y'all supported my asking for it. The prior audit that we had, I also requested and the board at that time also supported me. Something the viewing audience may not be aware of, this is not the first time an auditing firm is going to look at construction. Won't an auditing firm take a look at the construction during the audit each and every year?
I'll leave that for my colleague to answer since he's the one that does that work. But I believe that there are, there's some element of procedures performed over construction costs.
But this is a, the purpose of this is a deeper dive into the construction. And you're actually going to the builder's books. You're auditing them on our behalf, which is another way of saying it.
That is correct, yes. We're auditing the projects themselves and not the overall construction for the district. So individual projects, yes.
This is always, at least in my mind, and of course, as you know, I'm a CPA. I have audit experience and also construction audit experience. For the viewing public, would you say there's a difference in cost construction between a Class A and a Class C building?
Yes, just by definition, there are different classes of buildings, so yes.
Is there a difference in cost for construction between a tilt-up that you might use for a warehouse, but some Class Cs are tilt-ups versus the way an educational building is built?
Yes, there are stark differences.
We always need to make comparisons, but we have to understand the comparison that we're making. So I have no problem that we make a comparison to the office buildings simply because it's a possibility. But then we, we can take a look at the difference and we have to understand what that difference is. You know, before I was a trustee, I was actually involved in a project where we compared the construction cost of this school district versus other school districts. And I actually prepared the schedule on that. And I can remember a representative from another school district saying that, because our costs were lower, that I was making an unfair comparison because I wasn't taking into account where they had to build and the additional cost associated with it. And I think that's the point. In construction, you always need to take a look, always appropriate to make a comparison, always appropriate to ask questions. But then you need understanding of what the answer gives to you. With respect to related parties, did you also make certain that, you said, key employees of the school district, did you also check to make certain that no board members were involved with any of those subs?
I would have to go back and review the procedures we performed in detail, but I do not believe so. I think we were looking specifically at district employees. People who had purchasing authority, you know, purchasing power on an individual basis is really what we were trying to focus in.
And that's appropriate. However, as a board member, I always prefer that an auditor makes certain that they check for us so that we can say to the public, somebody has looked at us and found no findings.
Duly noted. Well, we can make sure that happens next time.
I do find it impressive that you came away with no findings. I requested the first audit, not because I had concern about our school district, but there were internal control breakdowns at different school districts, albeit smaller, and of course, one larger, which said that we needed to take an internal look at ourselves. So I always think internal looks are good, but I'm always comforted that when we have those internal looks by outside experts, that the report that comes back is no findings. So thank you for your work. Thank you for coming here tonight to be able to make the presentation and also answer the questions.
Thank you for having me.
Yes. Natalie.
Matt, I'm wondering, I really liked the suggestion of auditing the region education. I'm wondering if we could also do a little study of the kinds of rubrics, the amount and the weighting of the rubrics. I feel like the, we've used the same architects and I think to quality, I'm not quite, I mean, and builders. And I think that's probably why we have beautiful, like when you said that we want beautiful, safe buildings for children, I do believe we have beautiful, safe buildings for children. And also I have heard in that kind of, in the discussion with others around that we also have, like, we are smart about how we build, like no curved walls and all these things that add to the construction cost. So I really do under, I think we're going to find a very positive comparison when we do that. But I'm just a little intrigued because I do think it's maybe to our benefit that we have a small circle of people we work with. But I also wonder, is our, are we kind of closed and who is then able to work with our district in this? And would we maybe have a little price if we were looking at other architect firms? If anyone else could actually compete with a rubric that says relationship in the past? You know, like, actually, it came up last meeting in technology when we were building Chromebooks. And basically, the price and the quality of the machine would have been substandard to the relationship of working with the people in the past. And so I just wonder about that in these as well.
If you're speaking in relation to architects, we did RFQ back in 2015. That's when the architects were selected. So for the 14 bond and the 19 bond, we used the same group of architects. And the reason we did that for the 19 bond is because there was such an overlap. And we actually pulled contracts from 14 from being awarded so that we could combine the safety and security scope. And we already had architects working on those projects. So we kept the same core group of architects. Now, when we do another bond in the future, we will do another RFQ for architects. In regards to general contractors, if you look at our evaluation criteria, we talk to other districts that use CSP. And that's how we develop and fine-tune our evaluation criteria for awarding general contractors. The pool of general contractors, if you look at the number of responses on these three bids, I think there were 10, and I don't have that slide in front of me, Mr. Gray. Do you recall? We had 10.
We have 11 on transportation center, six. Six on Sprague Middle School and eight on Burchanan.
We get good participation from the general contracting companies on responding to CSPs. Our criteria simply determines best value. The majority of it's price, subcontractors, history with similar scope. Not a lot of weight is, I don't even think we have weight put on past work with the district for awarding a general contractor. It's all about who their subs are, the price of the project, their reputation in the industry. So, and again, we do meet with other districts that do CSPs and compare our evaluation criteria to make sure that we're capturing, we want it to be as robust as possible. Because when we recommend a general contractor to the board and to the community, we want to make sure they can finish that project on time and within budget.
Well, Mr. Customer Service, Mark teased that he's replaced Roy as Mr. Customer Service. But thank you. Actually, I think you answered exactly what was that gnawing question, which was, it's been since, it's been almost 10 years since we had an architecture RFQ. So that would understand why that feels like that same group keeps responding. Okay, thank you. That answers, actually answers my core question that I had with that.
And again, when we do another bond, we'll do another RFQ, just the overlap between the 14 and the 19 and making sure that we could get started on the safety and security scope for our elementaries, that's why we kept the same group of architects.
And again, I do want to congratulate the team, the whole group, for no findings. I think that's exceptional, high-quality work. Thank you.
One final comment before we close this agenda item. One final comment before we close this agenda item. I know I won't be on the board for much longer, but I would mention to my colleagues, I do have an audit background, but the board should not be the ones to open the sealed bids. That's a line that you do not cross. You do not want to be that close, my recommendation, you don't want to be that close to a vendor. I'm not saying that anything untoward would ever happen, but we do know that it has happened at places in this state and also at places in the United States. And the more you can build that wall, even if it's considered to be a Chinese wall, and that's a term of art within the financial industry as required by the SEC, it may seem a little silly, but I think board members need that protection, that you don't touch it, you let some professional handle it, so that you keep yourself at arm's length from the process. And for the viewing audience to know, with respect to Chromebooks, when we made, as a result of the pandemic and accelerated the one-to-one, we found that some vendors could promise a great price, but they couldn't deliver Chromebooks. And so merely that we go with a vendor that may be higher, but being able to deliver the product is real value. Sir, thank you for coming in. Safe drive back to Austin. And discussion of audits are always difficult. I think as a board, we do have to ask difficult questions, and that's entirely appropriate. Tone and presentation is always a challenge, but if you go back and see me on film, I've asked any number of uncomfortable questions that I felt had to be asked in the public. The board will now review the following action items. During review of the following action items, any board member may remove one or more of these items, at which times these items will be addressed and voted on individually. Was that the only report we had tonight, 3A? Okay. Well, I would have liked more reports.
I'll make one up.
4A, very significant. The board will consider naming a lone finalist for the position of the superintendent of schools. This item may be discussed prior to action in closed session pursuant to sections 551.071 and 551.074. That is not tonight. That is Monday. 4B, the board will consider approving the minutes of the October 9, 2023 regular board meeting on Monday. 4C, the board will consider approving the minutes of the October 10, 2023 special call board meeting Monday. 4D, the board will consider approving the minutes of the October 11, 2023 special call board meeting Monday. 4E, the board will consider approving the minutes of the October 12, 2023 special call board meeting. Let's see, 9, 10, 11, and 12. That will also be done Monday. The board will consider approving the minutes of the October 23, 2023 special call board meeting Monday. 4G, the board will consider approving the minutes of the October 25, 2023 special call board meeting Monday. 4H, the board will consider approving the budget amendments for the period of July 1, 2023 through September 30, 2023. Questions only. We've already been given the information in our board book. Let me turn to my left this time. Lucas, any questions? Debbie? Julie? To my right, Scott, Natalie, Gilbert. No questions. Oh, go ahead.
Karen, I was wondering if I could ask for an update on the number of vacancies we have, maybe mostly in like the 11, 12, 13, 21, like those instructional categories?
And I would have to turn to Dr. Deborah Stewart for that information.
Fantastic. And she looks so ready over there.
I am ready. Will you share with me again what year vacancies for?
I'm thinking mostly in those instructional areas, like teaching, counseling, and the new 21. How many vacancies we have at current for, I'm gonna say, I guess, campus-based instructional-type positions?
Okay, we'll have that for you Monday.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Sharita, do you have a vacancy list with you? Okay. So 350 teacher vacancies, but on Monday, we'll give you a more detailed list of the vacancies, the campus vacancies, counselors, PIERAs.
Thank you. You guys do a fantastic job, and I will appreciate that information.
Thank you.
Well done, Sharita.
So for items, 4B, 4B through 4H, may we move these to the consent agenda? Holly, 4B through 4H. Now, 4I, the board will consider approving the district's 2023 annual comprehensive financial report and single audit report, and accept the auditor's report on the district's general purpose financial statements and single audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2023. We have a brief presentation tonight. Karen, are you going to start this?
Yes. Before, as Amanda Bowles and Greg Peterson from Weaver are walking up to the podium, I just want to take a moment to thank the finance team. Amanda does an amazing job leading the finance team that consists of Mabel Isles and Melissa McIner, and their whole team. And it's, you may see this report that's 160 pages. However, this is a year's worth of work, and excellent work from her team. And so I just want to say thank you to the team for their hard work. And also, want to just mention that, you know, a lot of districts do not prepare a comprehensive annual, an annual comprehensive financial report. They just prepare the basics. And our team prepares it, and they, we prepare it ourselves, the whole report, and then the auditors review it. So I just want to recognize the team for that, and I'll turn it over to Amanda. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I know where the presentation is. There we go. Okay. Good evening, President Jackson, members of the board. Tonight, I will share with you the financial results for the fiscal year 2023. And with me this evening is Greg Peterson, our audit partner with Weaver and Tedwell, and he's going to go over the results of the annual financial audit and the federal single audit report. The Texas Education Code requires an annual financial audit of the district, and the Single Audit Act requires a compliance audit of our federal funds. The district prepares the annual comprehensive financial report in its entirety, as Karen mentioned. And I also want to recognize my amazing team, Mabel Isles, Melissa McIner, Annette Pete, and their teams. I'd also like to thank the communications team for the design of this year's cover. Y'all all got an electronic copy, but it recognizes Dr. Henry and all the accomplishments of the district. We're only required to submit an annual financial report to the Texas Education Agency, but as Karen mentioned, we do the comprehensive report instead. It's a much more transparent report. It has 10 years of data for ease of comparison across years. And the district also continues to receive the Certificate for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, and the Association of School Business Officials, ASBO. We've received the GFOA award for 27 years and the ASBO award for 26 years. And as Karen mentioned, not many districts prepare this report in this state. Only 6% of districts in Texas prepare this report. There we go. One of the required statements is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, which reflects the effect of district operations during the fiscal year. As of June 30, 2023, the general fund reflects total revenues of 1.106 billion and total expenditures of 1.072 billion. The district's net change in fund balance is 36.4 million, and this increase in fund balance is due to the reclassification of general fund expenditures to the federal stimulus grants. Without those federal stimulus grants, it's estimated that our deficit would have been 71 million. As you know, Ms. Smith always brings to the board the full potential deficit without federal stimulus funds and assumes that all funds are spent, all positions are filled, so that the board knows the potential deficit. The ending fund balance for 2023 was 556.7 million, which is approximately six months of expenditures. In this year's annual comprehensive financial report, we assigned 138.6 million in fund balance towards the 2023-2024 deficit budget. And as of June 30, 2023, we have approximately 75 million that's remaining in ESER funding that's going to help us offset that deficit. Just a couple things to highlight for the general fund. Our general administration costs were 1.82% of total expenditures, which is well below the statewide average of 3.5%. Our district, our administrative cost ratio continues to be the lowest in the area and across the state, and it's well below the TEA threshold of 8.55%, which is allowable for districts with more than 10,000 students. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board created a new accounting standard titled GASBY 96, Subscription-Based Information Technology Arrangements. The new standard was effective for fiscal years beginning after June 15, 2022, so therefore, it was implemented in our 2023 fiscal year financials. GASBY 96 requires the district to account for subscription-based information technology arrangements as a right-to-use asset. This new standard requires the district to recognize a liability and an intangible right-to-use subscription asset in the amount of the present value of the principal payments through the maturity of that arrangement. The impacts to the district's net position due to the GASBY 96 implementation were immaterial. The long-term reporting of right-to-use assets and liabilities has no impact to our fund financial statements and are only used for government-wide reporting. A few examples of those types of subscriptions were Google Workspace, Microsoft Office 365, Zoom, online childcare registration and leave management software. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Greg Peterson to discuss the results of the annual financial audit and the federal single audit report, and then we'll both be available for questions at the end.
All right. Well, thank you, Amanda. So the purpose of an audit is for the auditor to render an opinion on those financial statements. And the opinion that we have given the district is an unmodified opinion. So that is the highest level of assurance that you can receive in an audit. We conducted our audit in accordance with Government Auditing Standards and GASS. In addition to just looking at the numbers of the financial statements, we also consider the district's internal controls, because obviously, that kind of lays the foundation for the district's operations. So we want to make sure that there's solid internal controls in place. Throughout our testing, we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls over those significant transaction classes that we tested. As part of our evaluation of internal controls, we also obtained an understanding of the IT control environment within the district, and we did not have any deficiencies in that area as well. So in addition to rendering an opinion on the financial statements themselves, we also conduct single audits over your federal major programs. Again, we render an opinion based on compliance and on your controls over compliance. So we're going to be rendering an unmodified opinion, also a clean opinion. The two programs that we tested were the child nutrition program and the ESER funds. As you're aware, these major programs are on a three-year cycle. So we cycle those programs through every third year, unless you're ESER, and the federal government says, this is a high-risk program, you shall audit it every year. So that's why ESER's been on this bullet, on this slide for the past couple of years. But we should see some new programs rolling in next year. So through our testing, the district maintained its identification as a low-risk auditi. The way you achieve that is by having no material weaknesses in your internal controls, receiving unmodified opinions, having no going concern issues, what else is it? And yeah, I think I said unmodified opinions. Oh, and having no issues of non-compliance. So the district does maintain its designation as a low-risk auditi. Through those two programs that we tested, we actually obtained 70% coverage of your total federal expenditure. So that just tells you how big those two programs are. They represent 70% of your total expenditures. And yeah, and again, if you can, you know, sum up an audit as a board, what do you want to hear? You know, what are the takeaways from this short presentation here? It's unmodified opinions. It's no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies in your internal controls. So again, far to rate the audit, this would be an A audit. You're blessed to have a great financial team. Karen, Amanda, they're just great to work with. We ask questions, they have answers. So.
Thank you. I'll ask for comments or questions. I'll start to my left. Lucas?
Following up on your last point, I would imagine Karen told you which questions you didn't ask, and you should have. Thank you, and as well as Amanda. Thank you very much for the report. Thank you for your work. Karen and team, you guys are without peer. So reports like this continue to give us confidence in our controls. The ratings which our bonds receive continue and should communicate to the community that our district is well taken care of under your stewardship, and we appreciate the effort, because it is a go above and beyond level of excellence that you guys, and I'm not just saying that, it's true.
Thank you.
I remember I actually asked Karen a question, and she hunted me down at the fun run, Dr. Henry, to give me the answer. What is the time duration when you begin the audit? What does normal look like? And what level of detail do you guys spend doing this?
So we kind of break the process up into two segments. So we have our interim testing that we do. Generally, that's around April, and we'll come out for about a week. And that's really where we do a lot of our initial interviews and obtaining understandings of internal controls. We do some of our sampling testing during that time to help us kind of design what we're going to do for final field work. And then final field work, we come in, and that's generally about a three-week process of hot and heavy, asking for information, asking questions. But that's a typical timeframe it takes to conduct the audit.
Karen, I'm going to ask a knowingly ignorant question. We've seen a spike in home values in the last few years, and during the recent past, actually not too recent, and Tom, you've told us many times, you had the pleasure of dealing with a fall in home values. In our economy, there's actually a legitimate threat of that may happen again. Do we think about stress testing? Is that part of our process?
I guess I'm not.
That's a kind way of saying, Luke, ask a better question. I'll try again. Mine is green.
No, it's working. Okay.
So Karen, where I'm going is that I understand this audit and the controls that are in place, and what I'm wondering about is that, do we have a control when we think about the valuations of our bonds? You have nailed it. Your team has nailed it in recent past. We sold at the right time. We got the prices that we wanted. We did a great job. As we're looking at the potential variability of values in the market in the coming years, how do you guys think about that?
And you're referring to bonds?
Uh huh.
Okay. Yes. You know, one of the things that we look at, I mean, we constantly monitor the market. I look at the market. I get information on a daily basis. But I work very closely with our financial advisor in looking at the right timing of when we should go into the market. And so, for example, you may recall, typically, what we've done is we've sold our bonds in September. And we saw prices going up as far as borrowing cost, and the interest, we were afraid the interest rates were just going to keep going up. So we looked at, should we go ahead and sell our bonds in April? And so we went ahead and sold our bonds in April. And it was very, it was good that we had did that, because it would have cost us a lot more money. So we looked at, should we go ahead and sell our bonds in April? And so we went ahead and sold our bonds in April. And it was very, it was good that we had did that because it would have cost us a lot more money and would have been more expensive to the taxpayer per se, you know, because what ends up happening is those costs go up, you might have to have a higher tax rate on the debt service side. We've been very fortunate that our property values are growing. That's another thing we look at, is we review our property values. And when your property values are growing, that helps you offset what debt service tax rate that you need to have to be able to pay your debt service. So a combination of that, as well as, I recently sent something out to y'all about our most recent bond refunding. So we monitor the market also to see when it would be a good time to basically, if you will, refinance our house. I like to equate it to the same way. And so we were able to realize additional savings because of that that would reduce our debt service payments on an annual basis. So we look at all those different things to determine, you know, what the timing and what is best. Even a couple of years ago, I think it was last year, maybe the year before, we even, with what was going on with the market, we decided to split up one of the bond sales, and we took part of it and tied it in with a refunding and then sold the money, rest of it later, to try to see, you know, what was with what was going on in the market. We're trying to split our risk, so to speak. So those are the different things we look at on a regular basis.
Back to you, and this will be my last question to give time to the rest of the board. When you're looking at the controls, are you asking questions of whether or not we have this sufficient controls in place?
Yes. So what we'll do is we'll identify a transaction class. So let's say payroll. So we will go in, we will interview all the key players, process owners within that transaction cycle, understand the process so that we can identify those key controls. And once we identify those key controls, we can then go design an audit test to make sure that those controls are in place. So we do that for several transaction cycles to give to enable us to get comfort that the district's internal controls are operating effectively. And we try to, you know, look at those transaction cycles that represent significant transaction classes for the district. So payroll is one of the largest expenditures within the district. So we want to make sure that we're getting a full understanding of the internal controls in place around payroll. Cash disbursements is right behind your payroll expenditure. So those two for sure. I mean, we're, we're really diving into those processes to make sure that we fully understand the controls in place and that they're operating effectively.
I know I said that would be my last question. I fibbed. Are you evaluating the controls that we have in our district versus other districts?
Um, no, that's not really what we're, we're not really doing it compared to other districts because we're really doing it based on a process. It's like, you know, the process is designed, you know, the controls are designed to operate within that process.
That makes very, that makes good sense. I understand. Okay, thank you.
Debbie.
I just want to say, as someone who in their previous life was very accustomed to annual audits of processes and controls, your words are music to our ears tonight as a, as a board trustee. So thank you very much for your, for your work and analyzing that.
Absolutely. Our pleasure.
Julie.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate Lucas's questions about the process of doing an audit. As a parent of a student working on her master's in accounting, who's going to be be an auditor as soon as she graduates and passes the CPA.
We do, we accept resumes at any time, so.
Excellent. No. No, she's not coming back home, so, you know.
Darn it.
But, but thank you for the opportunity, the offer. I'm incredibly pleased by these positive results. And just the fact that only 6% of ISDs in Texas even go through this process says a lot. We are, we're not afraid of accountability and transparency, and in fact, we embrace that. And, and that we're recognized by the state of Texas with the highest rating for our financial integrity is just, it says a lot, and so I'm grateful for that. I have two questions. One is the information that's been shared tonight, that will be on the district website?
That is correct. It'll be posted after the board approves the audit. We will post it tomorrow.
Good. I think it's very important that our stakeholders have access to the same information that we do, and that for those that want to look into it, have access to that information. So thank you very much for that. I really appreciated the thoroughness in the financial, the federal audit. I spent some time with that. Not going to lie, that was today, even though we got it earlier. But I do, I appreciate the depth of information in the federal audit as well. So my, my last question then is, and I asked this last year, are there any concerns or challenges that you would encourage the board moving forward to be aware of or to be conscious?
Yes. And I'm going to kind of be a broken record and say probably the same thing I said last year, and it, this is still relevant today, is cybersecurity.
That's what you said last year.
I can't tell you how important being on top of that is. I mean, it is probably more important today than it was last year, especially with the AI advances. I mean, it's unbelievable what wrongdoers can do with that type of thing to manipulate your system to try to gain access. So it's very important to be on top of your cybersecurity.
Thank you for answering that question again, and the fact that it's the same answer two years in a row, that informs the board moving forward that we need to make sure that we're putting resources in place and measurements in place to ensure that we are well-prepared for anything that may be coming our way.
It can be devastating to your operations to have a cybersecurity attack that would hold your information to ransom. So it's very important to be on top of that.
Well, then maybe I would suggest again, maybe at a, at a future board meeting or at a future board workshop, that we spend some time focusing on that issue as a board. Okay. Thank you.
Going to my right, Sean.
Thank you very much for information. And speaking of cybersecurity, I would say that the biggest risk honestly is, is our own people. You know, that's in cybersecurity, I'm in the industry, and so just happened this week, a company had credentials in the wild. And that happens more than not, phishing. Those are the biggest cybersecurity risk ever, which is why we have great programs here. In fact, we just got sent one down to our emails to do one. So I'd encourage everyone to be diligent with their passwords. Quick question, and you talked about fieldwork.
Yes.
Talked about controls. And I know, I guess, why you picked these two programs, because they're federal programs and they're tied to federal money. Do you go down to the, to the, and I don't know these answers, I'm going to ask this question, do you go down to the level of how this money is being spent and where it's being spent tied back to the federal, to the federal programs?
Yes, sir. Yes. So that is, so, so all of our federal audits are tied to the Office of Management and Budget. They provide us with an audit program for each one of these federal programs. And we go through here, we determine there's 13 possible compliance requirements for every single audit, for every single, single audit program. We go through there, we determine which ones of these 13 are directed material to those programs. And allowable cost and allowable cost principles are pretty much directed material for 99% of all the programs that we test. So yes, when we test these programs, we make sure that those monies are being spent in a proper way, what they're designed to be doing. Yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
Nadla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to also say that I appreciate the transparency, the tenure view. I think that the, the public having access to that is fantastic, and so that extra work with such high quality and the unqualified, no material findings, what was the third thing?
No, no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses, no noncompliance, unmodified opinions.
Unbelievable. I'm learning new terms. And I like it because they're all really positive terms, and so I really do want to say thank you. I don't actually have any other questions except for can I also get a hard copy that I think some of my colleagues got of that, because I think it's really great work, and I'd like to be able to share that with the, the public as they ask the questions. And could you actually illuminate where, that was a great question Julie had, where people can find it on the website?
Absolutely. If you go to the Finance Department under Financial Information, it'll be there on Monday after it's approved.
Great. Thank you.
And we'll get you a copy.
Appreciate it.
Gilbert. Yes, I want to thank you for job well done, and again, echo my colleagues' very good questions throughout the, the questioning here and Karen's team. Again, rock and roll as the last few, and we always have before, but more meaningful in the last few meetings that we had, your group was brought up quite a bit in how outstanding it was throughout the state and well, well-heard of the Cyfer Finance Group and, and how you guys do work. So it was very flattering, and now we get to see it right here in front of us and everything else, though.
Thank you, Gilbert. And I just have to say, I, all the credit goes back to my team.
Well, that's a great team, a very great team. The only question I might have had could have been almost like Lucas asked it a little bit, though. I know we got an A. And again, I know a minute ago you said not comparable, but when you're doing these findings with other, I mean, when you're doing this kind of work with other school districts, is that normal, an A? Is that, or is, I know it's conception already as it is, though, but is it, you know, we wanted to know where we stand throughout.
Yeah. I mean, an A rating for an audit is exceptional. You know, a lot of other districts wish they had the results that that y'all have. You know, having no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, that's quite the achievement. You know, and really, again, it kind of really starts back to the basics of having that solid internal control foundation. That's where, when we do have findings, when we do have recommendations, it's a breakdown in those internal controls. But this group takes that very seriously. So they make sure that controls are adequate, they're monitored, they're evaluated annually. So it really helps achieve the accomplishments that y'all have had in this audit.
Outstanding. Appreciate the answer and appreciate the work and to the whole team as well. Julie.
Lucas has his slide on first.
Lucas.
When we're talking about process, you're also speaking my language. When we think about automation and the district of our size and the growth objectives that we have, and I know that we're rolling out our master data program, Paula, I just, again, want to reiterate, I am so excited about the work that you're doing, Paula, that of your team and the work that y'all have and continue to do and have in front of you. And I just wanted to express my support that I'm excited about the team working on improving our data quality and continuing to experiment and innovate in terms of automation and drive new efficiencies so we can spend less time where possible.
Well, and I have to highlight her team as well as Mabel Isles and Amy Giapp in our Accounts Payable Department. We recently automated that entire process, and it was thanks to Paula's team along with the hard work of Mabel in our Accounts Payable Manager.
Thank you. That's it.
Julie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one additional comment. You know, we see all this transparency and accountability from, on a financial side from Cyfer ISD, and this is, while we go above and beyond, this is something that is expected from public school districts. So as our state legislature continues to debate sending public money to private organizations, I hope that they are also considering attaching the same type of financial transparency and accountability standards to any educational organization that receives public funds. That should be a basic standard in the state of Texas.
Debbie.
And I think we'd be remiss if we didn't also mention our own internal audit team led by Blake Ledgeler, and what a great job they do.
I'm impressed that this board found reviewing an audit to be such scintillating reading material.
We're waiting for the one question, Debbie.
So Amanda, for the viewing audience, there's a section of the document that talks about percentage of the district's students being economically disadvantaged, the number of students receiving special education, and the graduation continued rate based on TEA accountability data tables. Would you read that sentence for the viewing audience to be able to hear that? Because I found that quite important.
Yes, sir. That's in the transmittal letter at the beginning of the report.
Indeed, you are correct.
I have the numbers, I don't have the exact sentence, so. There it is. Okay. So 60% of the district's students are economically disadvantaged, and 13,788 students will receive special education services.
And what is the graduation continued rate?
That is on the next page. CFISD students continue to excel in obtaining a well-rounded education as evidenced by 96.8% graduated slash continued rate based on TEA accountability data tables.
Thank you. You know, it's important for us to understand that in any audit, you always talk about the product and the quality of your product. Well, here we have students. And so that always gets mentioned, and it always should be mentioned, even though we're talking numbers, that's not really the, the focus here. So there's a couple of other items I want to bring up. If we take a look on page eight, we talk about net decrease in state revenue due to lower-than-anticipated average daily attendance. What is that number?
I think you're referring to page 21, where we're comparing original budget to amended budget?
Yes.
Okay.
That'll work there, too.
7,957,233 was the net decrease in state revenue due to lower-than-anticipated average daily attendance.
So, so an $8 million reduction in revenue available because post-COVID, our families are more comfortable with children not going to school perhaps quite as often. There was a decrease in state revenue due to lower-than-anticipated TRS on behalf. So two questions. What does on behalf mean? And then what's the number?
On behalf is the payment that we have to make. Well, it's, it's not really a payment. It's a, an expenditure and a revenue that we have to show for our TRS contributions. And that number was 4 million lower, or was a $4 million decrease than what we originally budgeted, and that's due to all of our vacancies that we had last year.
Then we had a net decrease in payroll costs for unfilled positions. What was that number?
That was 70,841,140.
$71 million plus the four, roughly 75 million. Mark, is that because we didn't want to hire teachers, or were there just not teachers available?
Availability is a problem.
75 million is a big number. Some districts in this state budget that knowing they can't fill the positions. My comment to my colleagues who are staying, you should never do that. You always need to budget as if you are always filling every position, because that's our job, right? We want to fill every position. We don't want to budget saying, oh, well, we won't fill that position. Those, those kids, it don't matter. No, the kids always matter. And reviewing the audit has a direct impact for our students. Something that I brought up years ago when it, when it first was introduced, and I enjoyed the conversation at that time with your predecessor, Karen, as well as Professor Michael Granoff, who was probably the leading academician in, in the country on it. If we take a look at page 22, did our net pension liability increase or decrease? What is the dollar amount?
Our net pension liability, it increased by 247 million. And that was due to the result of differences between projected and actual actuarial experience and projected and actual investment earnings.
So a quarter, so our liability went up by a quarter of a billion dollars. Did we have any control over that?
No, we did not.
So once again, a tremendous impact to the financials. The critical question here is, does the investing public understand that this is not part of our control, or are we punished with higher interest rates because of all of a sudden we have a $250 million additional liability?
I think for the public, it's important to focus on the fund financial statements that truly reflects the operations of the district. That truly shows our ending balance for our fund balance. I think what you're referring to is the government-wide financial statements, which shows all of our liabilities as if they're due as of our liabilities as if they're due as of June 30, and that's not the case.
The other, the term I used was investing public. So when we go to the market to sell our bonds, are we disadvantaged because we have this tremendous pension liability, or do they seem to understand what it means?
I think they truly focus on what our fund balance is, what our property tax revenues are. Karen, I'm sure I'm leaving something else.
Mr. Jackson, I would say that they understand it as well, because your last several bond issuance has all been AAA rated. So rating agencies, they understand.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, and they do, they understand that completely.
That's an important point, but it's one that we always have to pay attention to. Something from a evaluation, and a bit of a kudo to Karen, to you and your team, just recently, two state representatives that are part of our delegation, one on each side of the aisle, took the time to approach me and make positive comments about the state of financial controls and the integrity that reigns within your department. And for them to come up to me to pass on that comment, I found consequential enough that I should share with y'all as well. They didn't do it by accident, they weren't looking at my shoes. I know that much. And part of those go also to senior management, something that this district has done all the way back to Rick Barry and perhaps before, but I wasn't paying attention then, is putting talent where talent needs to be. When I was part of leadership Tasby, and of course, when I was 1042 for the state of Texas, I was shocked to find how many CFOs did not have a CPA, did not have a financial background. I was flabbergasted. So what this district does that I always take for granted that everybody else does because it just seems normal to me is not standard. And so kudos to senior management as well as to you, Karen, because you have to staff your department with talent as well. You already mentioned that Tasby 96 did not have financial impact. So basically, we capitalized these subscriptions as if they were leases, and we also recorded the liability. How do we recognize the expense? Because before, we would just expense it as we pay it. Now we're capitalizing it. Does that mean we never expense these?
We still expense it as it's paid annually.
So we have the capital asset, and we have the liability, and there's some type of interest expense involved in there as well since there's a liability. Is that correct?
Greg, you want to take that one?
Yes, yeah, so there's an incremental borrowing rate that's determined based on the district's risk rating that's being applied to those.
And then, and then one final question. Whenever we talk about tax rates, I always bring up the concept of sensitivity analysis. So Lucas, I use different terms than you do. Within the financial statements, embedded in the footnotes, and I'll have this question for you, do we do any sensitivity analysis on any of these numbers?
So the pension and OPEB are the largest liabilities on the district's books, and they are the most sensitive to changes. And within the notes to the financial statements, there is a sensitivity analysis for both the pension and the OPEB, other post-employment benefit plan, the effects that those changes can have on that liability. What you'll see is a 1% increase or decrease to the discount rate used in those plans can have a tremendous impact on the liability. I mean, in some cases, doubling the liability based on a 1% change in the discount rate. So yes, there's numbers that are very sensitive, that are even outside of the control of the district, specifically related to these pension and OPEB plans.
So two final comments that I'll leave the board with that are returning that has a direct impact on the education of children. When I came on the board, I pushed for an increase in fund balance, and I said that our goal was to have six months' worth of fund balance, and that's what we have. But that's actually a board decision. The board made a sign, no, we want four months, we want five months. My advice is, from a conservative perspective, six months gives you that cushion when something untoward happens. And certainly in two years, we've seen untoward financial situations happen, but that's a board decision. The board will direct the senior management as to the size of that fund balance. And certainly before I was a trustee, that it was a fight to keep the fund balance at three months, and in fact, it was at two months as well. The other comment that I would make that comes out of review of financial statements that impacts our students and staff, early on, we funded, we were a self-insuring district, which is a great idea. However, it led to catastrophic increases in medical cost. And as a board, based on the information in the financial statements, I requested senior management to make a change, and senior management did. Very unpopular, teachers were very unhappy with us, and they should have been, but from a dollars and cents standpoint, in my opinion, it was the only course of action that we could take. So I appreciate taking all this time on the audit. There is meaningful information here, and it helps drive decisions that we make. Amanda, thank you. Sir, thank you for your professional service and coming here. Yes, Dr.
Could I ask one question to Amanda or Karen, and it's of great importance to me? Have we faithfully been making our TRS payments over the past few years?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we have.
Okay.
In fact, that is one of the items that's part of FIRST, and if we don't make them, we would fail FIRST. So you're safe, sir.
You get an A with me.
Yeah. And Mr. Jackson, if you don't mind, I just want to clarify one thing. You had asked a question about the 70 million net decrease in payroll, and I just wanted to clarify that, yes, part of it is because of unfilled positions, but not the entire 70 million. A majority of it is because we recoded payroll costs from the general fund to the stimulus funds. So that was the biggest reason.
Thank you. Natalie.
I just wanted to say, because you've, one of the two large programs, ESAR and the Food Nutrition Services, I just wanted to give a positive call out. I was at the Shack meeting, Suzie Hunter under Darren Crawford, what a passionate person who's overseeing our food program, the care for kids is unbelievable, the way she wants to make sure kids eat healthy. And that is a lot of work to get a clean finding. They serve 124,000 meals a day and 20 million a year to students, and so that is, they have 1,200 employees, that's a lot of payroll, so that's a whole city on its own, basically. So I just wanted to make a positive call out to the fact that they were able to do that with such high quality and have no findings as well. And so kudos to that team for, because I think they manage their own finances right as an entity.
Absolutely, they do have a nice job. Yeah, they have their own accounting.
Yes, so they have their own accounting department, so it's not just the central group that's doing that quality work. It's now another whole section of, a whole accounting group that's doing great work. So I just want to make sure that was called out.
Everything still flows through our office, but.
And then I wanted to compliment Tom. When I first came, I questioned about that large fund balance, because to me, when we have kids who can't read, I struggle with the fact that the money for the kids this year, that the state gave for the kids this year, isn't used. But I do want to thank you, because as we had to make budget decisions this year, if we didn't have such a large fund balance, it was a very rough decision-making. So it's not about us here, but it definitely did make decision-making easier, and you shifted my thinking about that. I'm not all the way at six months, maybe, but I definitely have your wisdom, and so I'm sure we'll be calling you for some input as we look at the next budget. So thank you. I do want to say that that leadership, although it's a, is a decision, but it definitely did help our district be able to give teachers raises, and so, well done.
Thank you for saying so. It is a painful decision. And one other comment, thank you for your comments on the ESAR audit. We did have a patron, and he came to the microphone, he said, I don't live in this district, but he made inferential comments alleging that we were not using the ESAR funds appropriately. And I appreciate that, once again, we have an outside professional who can come in and say, yes, you are. And Scott, I appreciate your asking the detailed question, because that one had to be asked to give meaning to the overall understanding that the funds were being used appropriately. So Amanda, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing the audit. May we move this to consent?
I would prefer that it be a standalone, because I feel like it is such an outstanding accomplishment. I would rather see that, us vote on that alone.
Holly? Standalone, that's for I. For J, the board will consider approving the amendment to the 2023-2024 inter-local agreement with Harris County Resources for Children and Adults, HCRCA, to provide the services of one additional youth service specialist to assist with specialized services for students and families in CFISD. Questions only? We did have information in the board book. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, may we move this to consent? Holly? For J is on consent. For K, the board will consider approving the fentanyl abuse and prevention and drug poisoning awareness curriculum as recommended by the School Health Advisory Council. Questions only, no speakers on this. We do have, we did have information in our board book. We also have that, I think, on our screens as well. So let me turn to the right. Any questions, Scott?
I do have a question on one of the slides that talked about student feedback and scan a QR code. I'd like to know more about what that does, because I couldn't access it, and what kind of questions we're asking our kids? Because I cannot approve if that's a survey in here, asking kids personal questions.
Franklin, will you come up? And I do remember looking at the QR code, I just can't remember off the top of my head what it scanned to, but hold on one second, see if I can pull it up.
Mr. President and Dr. Henry and board, that, part of that presentation, the portion with the QR code was by the recommendation of the Shack Committee and asking students as far as their awareness of the effectiveness of the presentation after presented. But that was based upon feedback from the Shack Committee members.
I would say remove that, because that goes against FERPA. Asking kids questions about their political beliefs, middle issues, challenges, things like that is against federal law.
I can respond to what it says. If you take a picture of it on your phone, the questions will pop up, and it says, what is one important thing you learned from this lesson, and what would help make today's lesson more effective?
Again, my daughter's been in school, she was asked these questions, it was inappropriate then, it's inappropriate now. Do not ask any questions of our kids about these issues. It's inappropriate, this could be used against them, and I don't think it's fair to ask these questions of our kids. I'm not, I will not approve this if we don't remove this.
It was approved by the Shack Committee, but we understand, we hear what you're saying.
No, we can either do it now, we can do it later. I'll just say that.
Natalie, do you have a question or comment?
Thank you, I do want to appreciate the Shack was there at the meeting when they were able to give some feedback. And thank you, Franklin, I see that you added, I had questions about, at the time, about the resources that we are sending as reference material or places that students can go, the T Chat counseling, the Contact 988 Smart Recovery. I do see, thank you, they added the CFISD Resource Guide, which is local groups. There was a member of the Shack who represents Memorial North Houston Assistance Ministries or something to that effect, where there are local unlimited resources for, that students can access if there's help needed. And so I was appreciated, appreciate that you added those local resources. And the question I do have is, and I think you answered there, but I just want the public to understand, are any of these accessed without the parent? What is the process of accessing these materials or these resources regarding fentanyl or other drugs?
So regarding the T Chat, was that one of your questions?
Just in general, any of these, would a student be able to access these resources without their parents' permission, that we would provide them without their parents being aware?
Well, T Chat was, they do need parent permission, and it was approved recently by the Board of Trustees. 998 is a mental health, just like 911, you call for emergencies, anybody can call 988. So, no, you pick up the phone and dial 988. As far as, what was your last question, Natalie? You had?
I think you shared there, like counseling, any of those. Oh, counseling services that would be accessed. I know one group talked about having eight free sessions or whatever those, all of those that parent role in that, yes.
Parent approval would need approval.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gilbert? Let me turn to the left, Lucas.
This issue is something that's very personal to my family. We all have people, there are people in our community this past year that are no longer with us because of fentanyl educators. So I'm looking at one of the slides, Slide 23 of 26, statement, what can you do? I understood from a Shack training given by our police that the police on campus would have available to them medication, and maybe that medication is Narcan, Narcon, however you say it. I do not see on this slide directives to reach out, and Chief, I'm glad you walked in. Perfect timing. Yeah, you knew what I was doing. I don't see directives for the students, if they're on campus, to reach out to campus police or directions on how to access this. I see a statement that says, if you have it, administer Narcan. And I'm concerned that we're not giving our kids that may be on campus awareness of what to do when they have literally minutes.
I can speak to that.
Yes, ma'am.
So I guess, first of all, on that slide, it says, call 911 and find an adult, because we do have Narcan on our campuses. Depending on the level, it's in different places, but the nurse has it, the athletic trainers have it, all the extracurriculars have it as well at a high school level. Obviously, at elementary, it's just in the clinic. In addition to where we house it in school, our police officers always have it as well. Specifically, I can tell you that we have 12 kits at the high school level, so that would be two doses in each kit, so that's 24 doses. And then at the middle school, we have five kits, so that would be 10 doses, and then at the elementary, two kits, so that would be four doses. So it is available on our campuses, and we're asking kids to get an adult, call 911.
Thank you very much. My only, it's not a, it's not a concern. Should we be directive to say, contact the nurse or contact certain folks? Because the contact an adult may be a little bit too generic. We literally have minutes, so.
Exactly. And we don't, and the reason why, we can certainly add that language to contact a nurse, but we don't want them waiting for a nurse if they can get the first adult and ask them for help. We didn't want it to limit just to the nurse. So we just thought, get the first adult, call 911, they will know because they've been trained about Narcan this school year. We can certainly add it.
I'll trust the committee that is hearing these comments to render the right final wording. I'm just sharing.
We can add nurse as well, adult slash nurse.
Yeah. Yeah.
I just don't want them to get hung up on the nurse if there's another adult.
That makes sense, I understand. Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to understand and so Scott, can you kind of help me understand why you feel asking students for their feedback on material they received is, is something you don't approve of? I'm trying to, I'm seeking to understand here.
Yeah, House Bill 1149 by Valerie Swanson has put out, no survey by a school can be administered to a kid without parents' permission. We're, we're sick, we're basically asking, we're breaking the law basically by doing this. I go back to when my daughter was asked about questions for spending three months in a hospital, talked about suicide. Very inappropriately started asking her personal questions about her political beliefs. They asked questions about all sorts of stuff that made her come home and spend us a whole month in therapy for it because it was inappropriate. And I told her, she texted me, not, texted me and said, Dad, why are they asking these questions? They're so personal, about religion, about sex, all things. When you ask kids about things, when you go through a whole thing and I think this is, and my daughter's been offered drugs as well at school. This is an important thing to teach kids.
Right.
All, as, when I was in school, we had police officers come to us and show us all the drugs and I think that was really important. I just don't believe in surveys of kids because it, it opens up Pandora's Box for a lot of things. And that's where my problem is.
Okay.
I fully believe this is, it's required by law, we have to do this. I think there's a little better way to do it, it's my only approach.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Julie.
No questions. I appreciate the thoroughness of the presentation. Obviously, this is required by state law and I appreciate the time and effort put in by members of the Shack Committee to come up with a, a lesson that meets the requirements of the state law, but also provided significant parent and local community input through the Shack process. My, I guess I do only have one question then is, is this, this information obviously is available tonight at the board meeting. Will this presentation be available on the website or can parents see the information as well?
Absolutely. Should this be approved on Monday, it will be placed on the SCIFR ISD website under the Guidance and Counseling webpage. That's where all our lessons are.
Excellent, thank you.
You know, one of my colleagues has raised the question that the document does not meet legal standards. Before I ask movement on this, I, I will need direction from council. And then of course, as colleagues, we, we have a course of action here. We can send it back to Shack for reconsideration and, and be, be pointed with why we're sending it back. Or we can, after we hear from council, we can take different action on it as well. You know, so, so we really have different pathways that, that we can take. Marty, do, are you ready to address this tonight or would you prefer?
Well, I haven't seen, I, I understand what Ms. Cole just read, I haven't seen it. I think there's a federal law that talks about surveying and then of course, we had, I guess at the last session, was it the last session or two years ago, surveys in regards to third parties. So I would have to see it. I mean, I do agree that we do have to have parent permission prior to doing several things. Third-party surveys is, is one of those. And so I don't know that I would consider the Shack a third party, but I'll have to look at that. I feel like that we can address the concern in the context of the lesson and see, I think the idea was good from the Shack to say, how can we make this better? This is the first iteration of it, but I don't know that I would consider the Shack a third party. I, I need to, I don't, I have to pull the law up and refresh my memory, but I don't know that it necessarily applies to what I understand, but I will look at it and we'll definitely get with all the board members and before Monday, Christina and I, and we can talk about some alternatives because obviously would like to, to get this in a format that the board approves and ideally, we, you know, we would like all of you to, to feel good about it. And so we could send it back to the Shack or we can just get clarification and provide that before Monday and maybe we can address the concerns. Specifically, I know Mr. Henry probably wants to see the survey and hasn't had the opportunity to do that. And I know he's expressed that if it is, you know, seeking information of a more personal nature, that even if it's maybe not explicitly required, it's something that I think that maybe I'm hearing that we would like some parent permission or some more information about. I don't know if that helps Mr. Jackson, but that's as I understand it right now, but we'll continue to look at it.
So yes, please take a look at it. I'm a little, little uncomfortable with it being a QR code. I like the idea because it is engaging, right? But I think from a parental perspective, you always wonder, what if the information that the QR code ties into changes? I know it wouldn't, but I think that's a very natural concern of a parent. So although I'm not, not certain that I'm bothered by asking those two questions, I'm, I'm certainly a little hesitant about a QR code being in there.
And honestly, as I understand it, because I reviewed that lesson as well, that's really not the curriculum piece. I think that was the feedback piece to continue to develop the curriculum. So I don't even know that we'd need to go back to the Shack if we just decide to seek feedback in other ways, other than the QR code.
Very good.
That might be a good solution.
So Fitz, if I have supported the board, what we're going to do is let council take a look at this and we will take no action on this tonight. Okay, so that's, that's how we'll stand. Yes, Natalie?
This actually raised, I realize I don't actually have a clear understanding of, I know the law requires it, I think it's so necessary, it's so, we all pass the billboards with beautiful young faces who lost their lives. So my question though is, I know it's going to go on the website, where is this going, where are the lessons going to be executed? Is it a campus-by-campus decision, like in English and hell, in a P class or? And then the second thing is, are parents fully aware, would they be, it's not an opt-in because it's law, right? So are parents fully aware of when it will be offered so that they can offer that conversation at home? And is there a parent piece where we train parents so that this is going to happen and you can have the conversation with your children because it's going to be lined up, you know, with this lesson in school?
Ms. Blasengame, the, any lesson of like manner, we send out notifications to parents, notifying them when the presentation will take place at the individual campus. At that time, with the notification, all parents have an opportunity to allow their students to opt out of the presentation. And then if that takes place, they are taken to a non-punitive environment each time. And that is the case for all of our lessons as it relates to the Department of Guidance and Counseling. When, in addition to that, with the survey, just to kind of piggyback on the QR code, it is not a third-party QR code. We developed the QR code with the questions based upon the Shack's recommendation, which of course you were present for. And also, we've never asked any political questions, any religious questions from the Department of Guidance and Counseling. I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that matter.
And you, I think we discussed there, just so, because I think this is so important to parents, so this one is opt-out by the law, correct?
Yes.
That many of the surveys or other issues with sex ed, et cetera, are opt-in. I think you gave a summary at the meeting. Could you summarize for us what's, which things, you know, so the parents are aware of what their actions are? Because that, we discussed there even fine tuning that because it seems like there's, was feedback from parents at Shack that it's confusing, you know, we keep getting different emails, different emails and some are in and out, et cetera.
Dr. Blasengame, I can answer that. And the law requ, depending on the topic, the law requires different, has different requirements. So for example, sex education was a required opt-in. The law is silent when it comes to HB 3908. However, we took it a step further, we contacted TEA, we asked for their guidance and they said the same thing, that the, the law was silent, that there was not a requirement for parental notification, opt-in or opt-out. So we took it a step further and we surveyed a couple of districts who were not providing parental notification or opt-in or out, opt-out. So we were going to follow our current practice that Mr. Stevenson just shared with the board.
Thank you for doing your due diligence. I do think parent awareness and ability to support their kids and the discussion is so critical. So thank you very much for doing that due diligence.
You're welcome.
So back to 4K. Do I have consensus of the board that we will take no action on 4K? We will first wait to hear back from council and then we can discuss it further on Monday. Okay, Holly, that's action will taken. Marty, we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you. 4L, the board will consider approving the district and campus improvement plans for the 2023-2024 school year. We have the information in our board book, all, almost 1,000 pages of it. So let me go to my left, Lucas. Debbie.
She stepped away.
I thought she was being quiet. Julie.
No questions. I just want to thank the members of CPOC committees across our district, having served on the CPOC committee at the middle school level. This is quite an undertaking and I just want to say thank you to the many volunteers who supported the process of creating the campus improvement plans.
To my right, Scott. Natalie.
Yes, incredible, really the quality of the thinking, the ideas and the strategies just from one end, from elementary to middle to high and special campuses. I do want to also appreciate that, the, the labor that that is and I do hope that these are guiding documents for campuses and that it was a process that was helpful. One problem I have in being able to give a feedback or on this item is that I'm, I'm wondering, I hope I didn't miss it, but have I received STAR scores for the campuses? Do I know how these campuses performed on STAR yet?
I believe we did send the STAR results to the board. I can resend those to you, Dr. Blasengame.
I'm not sure that I received them and I definitely am very interested in seeing outcomes and I want us to be an outcome-based board where we look at student outcomes as a huge part of our work. And so I was, it was hard for me, for example, I would say Frasier Elementary, I want to call that campus out. That is a, that is a, I've known, I've had people who've worked there over the years and it's a really challenging, and to see the culture and the, and the outcomes and that campus so strong. But I really don't have, you know, I haven't really received for myself an ability to get a report where I could understand if that's a, I think I know that, but do I know that? So has, have, maybe on the, I, I could have missed something, but I'm wondering, did, did I, you know, how could I have gotten, can I get data that tells me before Monday so that I can look at the outcomes compared to the campus improvement plan and really make a proper vote on this?
May I comment? Dr. Blasengame, I'm looking at, for example, I'm looking at Posma and I've scrolled to the end of the document, page 186. That reflects many of the scores that you're discussing right now. So I think you've got much of the information you're requesting.
I, I'm, to look at 100 documents versus being able to get a summary report, and there actually are in those summary reports, a few different ways that I like to look at data across things. So I do appreciate that the data is here, but I also do, I would like to have a summarized report if I could.
Okay.
Mr. Scanlon, you're correct. All of the STAR data broken down by individual student groups and content areas are on the back of every single campus CIP along with their targets for the current school year. So when you say a summary, I'm just not 100% sure what you mean by that, beyond what the campuses have already done.
Can I just, is there a way, you don't have to recreate anything? Sorry. Is there a way, you don't have to recreate anything, but one, a summarized report that has it all in one place?
So one big document with all the campus data that's in the CIP is just attach it all in one document, is that what you would do first?
Maybe you just give me the report that came from the state or, I know that things are different this year, that's why I was super patient with it, but I don't, maybe, but I think that's a lot of work for you, so I'm not asking you to create something new because I know that's a question. I'm just, whatever you use when you look across the district, I'm really looking to be able to celebrate because I know that people have done incredible work and that's the school, for example, I call out, so.
Yes ma'am. And the accountability data have not been released.
Right.
So we don't have that. And the data that are on the CIPs in every single CIP in the back, that is what we use to look at. We take the data files that come from the state for the individual campus reports, we combine them in an easy-to-use format for the campuses, which is this Excel table. And these are the exact same data that we give to Dr. Macia, she shares with Dr. Henry. We would be happy to put it all together for you if you would like in one format, but this is exactly what we use.
So you have those exact pages in one little bundle?
I can put them all together, they're all in an Excel file, yes ma'am.
Thank you, that would be fantastic. Okay, okay, appreciate that. And then I would also ask a second question, I'm not sure if that's also in your area actually, but I know that, I think the window for reading assessment, sorry Linda, maybe it's to you, the window, the reading assessment window, I know we approved the MAPS scores and I know that we had some changes that, that you and I have talked about from the state that were very dramatic to how we were supposed to measure and teach reading. And so I wondered if that window has closed and we could get a report too on the reading scores of how the kids have come in, BOY, so that we can really track that progress this year.
So we sent that on the 31st of October? We sent that to you? So you have that information, I'm happy to resend it to you if you'd like, but on the 31st, we sent it to you. It's on our board monitoring system, that's, that's the timeframe, October. And so we were able to get, and you're right, it's a new system, so we were, made sure we got it all in, we wanted to make sure we got it out, we got it out in, in October because that's what.
Well, thank you, I, I actually had, I did miss that. And that's something I was so eager to see, so that's on me and I apologize for asking for that, thank you for sharing.
Let me know, send me an email if you can't find it, I'll be happy to resend it to you.
Thank you, yeah, thank you. No, I'll be able to find it, I should be able to find that, I definitely was eager to see it, so thank you.
You're welcome. That came from Holly. Yes, that's it.
In the, the, at the bottom.
In the email.
In the email too, this is the top of the email, October 31st.
Thank you very much, I'm very excited to see it and I appreciate that you got that to us in October and thank you for giving me the, the question.
Do you have additional questions?
No, that's all, thank you so much.
I do have a couple of questions for, probably for you Linda. You know, we have a major strategy, which is the monitored school. I think it's important for the viewing audience to know what this means since this is a key approach. So if you would briefly talk about what the monitored school concept is.
Mr. Jackson, Dr. Gori is the one who oversees our monitored school process, so I'm going to ask her to provide a brief overview of what that, what that entails and how we support our campuses through that process.
So Mr. Jackson, the monitored school process is something that we have put in place for several years. I've been overseeing it for six years now. The monitored school process is our way of supporting the performance and outcomes of identified schools who have fallen below the district standard of performance. So we set our district performance above the state, so here's the district, here's the state. If a campus falls in that gap, we provide support for them in any way possible that we can help boost the academic outcomes for that campus. There is a team from the, from the district, which includes myself from school improvement, a member of the school leadership team, curriculum and instruction, educational support services, student services, just everyone, all hands on deck to support a campus in any way possible to improve those outcomes and make sure that those campuses rise back above the district standard of expectations.
And Mr. Jackson, it is individualized for each campus based on their needs.
Absolutely. Individualized support, coaching for the principal, instructional leadership team development, we do anything necessary to improve the instructional outcomes for those campuses.
So is that available just to Title I campuses or is it available to all campuses?
It's any identified campus that falls below our district standard.
Linda, if you would, talk to us a little bit about CCMR. The state has made dramatic changes. The state has made dramatic changes in how it defines CCMR and what is acceptable, which I think will cause a shift in the approach of this district. So if you would, go ahead and sketch that out for us because it's, it's very important.
So college and career and military readiness, CCMR, has been a component of the, of the accountability system for, for years. There have been changes in and out, like military, the military part kind of went in and out because the military would not provide the, the state with sensitive information. And so they're kind of working through that. But the big thing with, with CCMR is what is measured. So CTE is measured, college readiness obviously is measured, but it is all measured for a group of students, a class that has already graduated. The data is a year old. And so the state changed the methodology that it is using for CCMR. It increased the standard from 60, like for example, 60 points equaled an A. Now 88, is that correct? 88 points equaled an eight. And they applied it to a group of kids that were no longer in school last year. They had already graduated. So our campuses couldn't do anything to, to improve those outcomes because that group of students, a class of 2021, were graduated. They were, the data is, is, is a year old. So our, we have been working with our campuses to, to build the CCMR and to, to be able to access more of those, the points that are needed to reach that 88 standard that, that is in effect. It doesn't just, it is not just going to apply the 23 accountability ratings whenever those come out, but it's going to also impact the 24 accountability ratings this year because that data is old data. We just received the methodology, October 31st? October 31st for 2023. So here we are, 2024. Now we know what the measure is, but it's applied to a, a group of kids that's already graduated. We can't do anything about it. So we are preparing for future, basically the class of 2025 now. And so it includes industry-based certifications, so we're, we're monitoring all that. We are, we, the, the CTE team along, along with Dr. Claiborne have worked very closely with every single campus in identifying kids that are on track for their industry-based certification, for their industry coursework. We have worked with Lone Star College to make sure that our college prep course is going to count for these kids because at one time the state didn't allow us to count it. And so they are now allowing us to count it. We're adding another college prep type program that is not as rigorous as what we have with Lone Star College, but it provides other benefits. So it provides other benefits where coursework can be accepted at other colleges, not just Lone Star, but it also provides the opportunity for the campuses to earn credit. So we have been working with the campuses. The camps have been very open to accepting and, and monitoring that data to make sure that we're on track for, for, for campuses to earn the points that are needed now for CCMR. But that's for the class of 2025.
So, so thank you for answering that. The, the purpose of the question was, one, the, the fact that there is a deleterious effect on STAR data when it ever gets released. But two, since they have changed the rules in which they account for CCMR, the question was, has senior management shifted to address those changes?
Yes, we have.
You know, one of the areas, as a follow-up question, in cosmetology, at one point in time, the commissioner almost came out and said he wanted to do away with those classes because he said it was setting students up for a minimum wage job. He backed away from that. Have, have the rules changed on how you obtain, you get these magical evaluation points in cosmetology? Has it become more rigorous or less rigorous?
Well, you know, the, each of the different CTE courses or industry-based certifications have their, their own number of credits or, or, I guess, number of hours that have to be performed either in seat for instruction or application piece of it. And there have been some tweaks made, but basically not, not many tweaks. I think the state has recognized that cosmetology, cosmetologists can earn a lot of money. I think, I think if you poll any, the ladies that are up here, we can attest that, that it is very expensive and it is very, six figures is, right, Natalie, six figures is not out of the question for someone that has a cosmetology degree and I think the state is recognizing that.
Excellent. I'm, I am always sensitive to that. I have been told that we have the largest cosmetology department in the state of Texas and at one time that it might be taken away from us.
Yes.
And I have spoken to the commissioner regarding my concerns in, in that area.
And, Mr. Jackson, I don't want to leave out the men because I know the men pay a lot as well for their, can pay a lot for their haircuts and things like that. So I don't, I don't want to be, I don't want to come out as leaving out men. I know that's important.
Lake Legler and I will fight for that program.
Going through all these and it really is, the board book was over 1,000 pages. For the individual campuses, I checked to make certain that it tied into the district, but every now and then something pops up. So one of the campuses talked about having an academy program. And what it said is, based on the most current student performance academic data, selected students will also participate in academic camps after school for reading, math, and science. And it almost sounds like it's a prize that they get to, to have this additional instruction. Also elsewhere, in another section, I read where students would be permitted to participate in an extended school day. So I think I know what that means, but if you would, kind of explain what, what that means to me.
I'm going to let, I'm going to ask Dr. Gori to share that because one of the, the campus that you just referenced that, that, that from is one of our monitored schools. So it's an innovative approach that they are doing to make sure that they're capturing the students who need the support during the day.
So the particular campus you're speaking of, they provide an academy where students have an extended school day, three days a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And because of our food services department, they're also provided dinner at that campus so the kids are able to eat breakfast, lunch, and dinner at that campus. So three days a week, every single day, every, every single week, I'm sorry, kids have an extended hour of school. That extended hour of school provides additional opportunities for them to participate in reading and math instruction. And this is third, fourth, and fifth grade students. It's very intensive intervention, it's very targeted, and they select those students and it is like an opportunity. You get this great opportunity to participate in these additional, this additional instruction and intervention. Parents, of course, get permission. We provide bus services so that there's no issue with students coming to school or, or getting there or getting home, shall I say. No issue with students getting home, so bus services are provided. Of course, I said dinner is provided and it's a, it's truly a culture that they've established with these kids to help them succeed. These are kids, of course, that have academic struggles, so this intensive intervention time, you have to make it meaningful so the kids will come on a regular basis. So that's a lot of commitment from kids, three days a week, every week.
So, so does this mean that time on task is still an honored strategy on academic attainment enhancement?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Excellent. Love the idea. I was tickled to see it in here, of course, had to be careful. You made me go through a lot of pages to get to it, but I did flip every page.
And, Mr. Jackson, I, I just want to add just a shout out to the teachers because it's a commitment on, on the students. It's a commitment on our teachers as well to provide that.
At some point in time in the future, I would love to be able to sit in the audience and find out that this has been extended to other campuses and that we've extended a stipend to the, to those teachers.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
May I make a comment?
Dr. Macias, or Dr. Gori, help me remember, we have a program in the summer for kids that are struggling to learn how to read and it's not presented as summer school. You have to be invited to attend and it's like going to camp. What is that program called?
That's Camp Summit.
Camp Summit. My grandson and so, he's a freshman at Bridgeland this year, but when he was in second grade, I think it was, he was invited to attend because he has dyslexia and it had not been diagnosed yet. And so maybe it was at the end of first grade. But anyway, you know, someone said summer school and, oh, it was just the rolling of the eyes and he didn't want to go. And then it was, no, it's a camp. And I was the one who picked him up every day from camp and he absolutely loved it and it gave him a love of reading. And I mean, it's all in being innovative and how we approach things and present it to our students as opportunities and not as a negative.
Absolutely.
Great job.
Thank you.
Oh, Natalie.
Actually, I think that Debbie, she shared recently, the reason she serves on this board is because she's so appreciative of the district and how her young grandson, who is dyslexic, was given the head start early to be able to be a super successful student now. And so I think that's a great statement for both the district and a grandmother who will serve. And also, Dr. Macias, I want to, I want to tell you that your leadership, sometimes the legislators, I, I feel like there's some really good ideas at the state about assessment changes or how we would look at the assessment program, but our district was one that chose to, to join the lawsuit. And the reason we did is you provided incredible information to Tom's question about the CCMR and the fact that these students have left our system and our leaders have no opportunity to address it. That was something I was able to share with several different colleagues and, and across the region and they were able to, they weren't sure how to look at the data and, and you shared it with me and I was able to share it with others because that was super powerful. It's not, hold us to high standards for children, but you cannot let a principal have a school, a drastic change in a letter grade on something they absolutely have no chance to, to go back and address and, and serve. So I want to commend your team for providing that data in such a tangible, solid way so that we can make a fair decision that would, you know, to push our, our voice on the lawsuit up to the state as a unanimous group on a board. So I want to appreciate that. And to Dr. Gori's team and to your team and that work as, on campus visits, visiting those campuses with they, in fact, when I say, well, how can we support you? They were scared to lose the support once they perform well because it's such a supportive and positive process to have those, those eyes and those ears, other people brainstorming the resources provided. So I would also like to know, like if we ever have a campus that's really got those challenging demographics and then they make that improvement, what are the things that still could stay there for those principals? What supports could we afford in our budget to do so that campuses continue to have, because there's always going to be new kids, especially the mobility. If there's a high mobility rate at a campus, I wouldn't want a principal to feel like, you know, we took away the supports just because they made it out.
And, and Dr. Blasengame, just so you know, a campus who's on the monitored school process, they're not in it for one year. They're in it for a minimum of two years so that we can continue those supports and those systems.
Excellent work. And then a third point is, we do have the data for the young kids, but in our board monitoring, on number four and goal one, number four, it says achieve, exceed, or make progress towards K through five independent reading levels in the following student groups, all special ed, emergent bilingual, and economically disadvantaged. And then it says, evidence of progress, BOY, MOY, EOI, reading levels. And so, and with a goal of all campuses will have 50% or more of their matched pair students achieve, exceed, or make progress towards K through five independent reading levels. So I think we only got it through second grade. I was really interested in number third, fourth, and fifth graders reading below level as well, if that's some information we have or not. I'm not sure, we didn't really approve a budget on MAP. I didn't know exactly which grade levels at the time, so it might be that we have, we don't have exactly the data that way, but I'd be interested in seeing that.
Dr. Blasengame, what you're reading from is, is the old board monitoring system? The one that was brought to you earlier, I'm not sure what, what month, is, is different. It talks about K2. It's, it talks about K2. But because, the reason, one of the reasons is because we have the information from the, the STAR results for the other, the other grade levels.
We have a Lexile level that comes out of the STAR, a STAR score.
You want to come up here and share that?
Starting with 22, 23, TEA is not providing Lexile levels along with the STAR data any longer.
So we don't get any reading level information for third grade, fourth or fifth grade kiddos?
That is correct.
Yeah.
A Lexile level, yes, ma'am.
And some of all of that, Dr. Blasengame, is, is tied into the change that the state, you know, that the state made with changing our reading programs and a more skill-based type program. And so those are all the changes that, that the state has made and that's what we're following.
And if I may, in goals, it's objectives five and six, with the skill-based data, as Dr. Macias said, that's what's measured through the MAP in the M class and those are the data that we provided to the board in the report.
I definitely am, would love to, this incredible team, you have an incredible team, you're an incredible leader and I'd really love us to be able to see how we could, I, I don't think the state, we've had that conversation. I'm not sure we made all the right changes at the state level and I feel like it has the potential to hurt students. I'd love for us to maybe even choose a few places where we could really see if we did do MAP on a few older grades on some of the kids who didn't show successful last year in second grade and see what we could track to see how they're growing under this change in the program to a skills-based program.
Thank you.
I, I know this team could really do some interesting data because you're so qualified. Appreciate it.
Some of the other strategies that I would highlight, page nine, strategy four. The district K through second primary ELAR curriculum department did increase foundational skills time from 30 to 45 minutes. Doing the same thing for kindergarten and first, once again incremental, from 20 to 30 minutes. I like the strategy. Page 11, strategy one, since this is one that I asked you all to do, I appreciate that you put it in there. For district improvement and accountability, develop and pilot a tool for collecting CO and extracurricular data. Page 14, strategy number 10, provide support for students receiving dyslexia services. My son, despite the fact that he has both an undergrad as well as a graduate and professional degree and licenses, is a dyslexic. He can do the work, it just takes him a lot longer than others. Page 16, closing the gap at apartment tutors. We have always had apartment tutors. I can remember years ago talking with Dr. Gori, I don't know why you never age, I have less hair and you still look the same you did 13 years ago. Not certain how that works out, but I'm happy for you. I wish I, I could say the same, same for myself. I like strategy number six, that we're staying focused on the concept of well-rounded education because that is in fact the heart and soul of what this school district is all about. Strategy number four, very important, on page 26, collaborate with the career and technical education program to promote the teaching and training teacher pathway program. I look forward to, to when I'm out in the audience and see how some of the ideas that HR is working on come to fruition. I think those ideas are, are dynamite and, and can be significant. I understand there, there are some risks associated with it, but, but I really like the ideas. Thank you for all the work that you put together. And, and I will say that I probably won't miss reading 1,500 pages, that this is my last one to do. May we move this to the consent agenda, looking to the right, to the left? Holly, this is item 4L that's been moved to the consent agenda. 4M, the board will consider approving the issuance of a career and technical education CTE teaching permit in lieu of standard teaching certifications as established by law. Questions only. Questions only. May we move this to consent? Holly, 4M is consent. 4N, the board will consider approving the innovative course, team sport officiating. We have information in our board book about this, which I thought was interesting.
We have a short presentation, Mr. Jackson.
Good evening, President Jackson, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Henry. Tonight, we are proposing the addition of team sport officiating to our elective courses in grades nine through 12. This is a TEA-approved innovative course. The proposed course would be designed from state-approved knowledge and essential skills and in partnership with our CFISD athletics department. In this course, students would acquire the knowledge to become successful officials, and students would also develop a personal fitness plan that directly relates to the needs of being an official. The following topics are included in the essential knowledge and skills for this course. Students will learn elements to be a truly successful official, and this includes effective communication skills, decision-making skills during games, identifying signs of potential conflict between participants, identifying the rules and the hand signals for selected sports, and adhering to the sports official code of ethics. In addition, being physically fit is important component of officiating, and students will learn overall concepts of wellness that officials need to consider. The curriculum would also include safety practices associated with officials to encourage a safe environment. And, successful completion of the course, students will be able to demonstrate an officiating style, use decision-making skills during simulated gameplay, and manage conflict among players and spectators appropriately. The semester course will focus on successful completion of the requirements to become a certified TASSO official. The Texas Association of Sports Officials, TASSO, is a certifying organization for referees and is the organization that provides officials for CFISD games. Students would join TASSO and pay a registration fee, which includes insurance, it includes required background checks, they are provided with rule books and a badge prior to becoming a certified official through the TASSO organization. Students would also be provided with networking opportunities with other local sports organizations. We hope to increase the number of officials to help fill what we understand are officiating shortages. The team sport officiating course would be offered as a semester elective. This course may not be utilized as a substitution for the state-required PE credit. If approved, the course will be offered for the first time in fall of 2024. The course curriculum will be developed during the spring of 2024, with the curriculum team in collaboration, again, with our CFISD athletics department. I have to say, our athletics director, Virginia Flores, and her team have been very helpful as we have vetted this course. The official rule books for the team sports will be utilized as the foundational material to teach the course and the rules of the sports. In addition, there's a wide array of certification preparation materials that are also available free of charge. Students will watch game film and enjoy guest features, speakers such as current TASSO officials and also experts within our own CFISD athletic program. This will provide practical knowledge as well as networking opportunities. Any teacher with a Texas certification for the high school level may teach this course. For students who practice officiating skills, at the high school level, these elective courses will be scheduled at the same time as a team athletics period. While we can't hit all of the teams, they will at least make sure that they're scheduling matched up with one of them for that real practice. Fees associated with the course will vary, depending on the sport organization and the number of sports that a student wants to be a certified official in. So for example, if a student is interested in becoming an official for soccer, they would pay a $40 application fee, along with an $85 annual dues fee to TASSO to maintain that officiating. Students may be required to pay additional fees if they choose to officiate for other organizations, such as youth organizations in our community. TASSO does have minimum ages for membership by sport. Students aged 16 or older may join TASSO as a regular member and would be eligible to officiate basketball, football, soccer, and volleyball. Some sports do require officials to be 18 years or older, or may require a student to be 18, or an official to be 18, to do varsity games, for instance. It's a common practice that inexperienced officials might typically be paired up with an experienced official for middle school games. Being paired with an experienced official would give these new officials the opportunity to receive that support as they continue to develop their officiating skills. Students in this course will have the opportunity to study the rules and to practice officiating in any of the following sports: football, volleyball, basketball, soccer, water polo, softball, and baseball. Some of these are limited to officiating once you do turn 18, but students will have the opportunity to be exposed to the rules for all of these courses. We do have CFISD students who have pursued the officiating certification outside of their school day, and they do currently work on the chains teams and things for our CFISD football games. So we're excited about the opportunity to possibly be able to provide time for students to learn these skills within their school day. At this time, we'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
I'll look to my left, Lucas. Debbie.
Just a comment, what an incredible opportunity for our students. Gosh, you know, this is just something that you know, I talk about opportunities, it's just out of the realm of anything I would have ever imagined, but, you know, thinking back to when my grandkids played sports and seeing, you know, young adults acting as officiants at their game, wow, this is great. I bet you're excited about this, Gilbert.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Full speed ahead.
No questions, but a comment, I'm thrilled that we are adding this to our course curriculum, our course offering for students. It gives them an opportunity to develop new skills and to contribute to our community, whether it's youth sports or at the middle school level, as well as to be able to earn money, you know, on the weekends and in the evenings and even after graduation. So I'm thrilled by that. I hope that maybe we'll find some organizations in the community to help offset some of the fees, so that's not a barrier. Maybe even some of the booster clubs would be willing to offer scholarships. And I think this will really help address the need in the state for more officials, because I know there's a shortage.
We might want to keep them in Cypher ISD first, though.
Hundred percent, keep them in Cypher ISD, yes. Thank you. Great, great.
To my right, Scott.
Two quick questions. Says all, in fall 2024, is this all schools?
We will be offering it all 12 of our high schools. It does depend on student interest for the course to be able to make, but there is quite a bit of interest across all of our schools. So we're really hoping that with the proper promotion, that we can be able to at least have one class period at each of our high schools.
And would you take a teacher like Gilbert on your team?
Natalie.
Yes, we were talking, maybe we'd call it the Gilbert Serabia class, and that was funny. So I do, first of all, this is so creative, makes me, coaches, don't mess with, you want solutions to things, you want a can-do attitude, call on the coaches of a system, working with your department, because I feel like when you see a need. I did have a question about, is there any, with this being a sort of a certification, is there anything about CTE that you're able to count? I know it's not an industry certification, but is there anything that can help us in those, in our data and our figures as far as that?
So this is not a CTE course. There are some innovative courses that are classified as CTE, and we do offer some of those as part of our program of study, because they're specified as that. And there are other elective CTEs, but this is considered a general elective.
My second question was similar to Scott's, because I know, for example, when my daughter needed Spanish 5 AP, it really did depend on how many kids at the school wanted it. So I just didn't know if it would, if we could at least give a, what the threshold was of number of kids that would be needed, so it could at least get a start in each campus.
Well, that's going to depend on the campus. One of the things about this course that does make it desirable is there isn't a specific certification. So that does give the campus some flexibility. We would, of course, love maybe teachers who have been coaches in the past, and maybe are not coaching full-time, but obviously have that passion. And so the fact that this course does not require a single specific certification, we're hoping that will give campuses the flexibility to be able to offer it, at least for the initial year, and to get that support and interest going.
Yeah, maybe, especially given that it would be during athletic periods and the number of coaches assigned. I know you need to teach it as a vigorous, you know, course that has its own grades and that kind of stuff, but I'd love to be able to see it offered. And then also, just this kind of thinking, I was thinking about our bilingual teacher shortage and programs like dual language and stuff that really count on us being able to have supply. I think the first time I saw Dr. Henry, when we first came out of COVID, and Mark, you were, you saw the kids as a resource as far as our tutoring, and you got a way for us to be able to hire our own students, to be able to go back in and support other kids. And so to me, I love that, because if you think back to the portrait of a graduate and some of those characteristics that we're saying we want to build in students, seeing that they can, that they're not just kids that we're here pouring into, but that they have something to give back. And so I would really love to see us apply this kind of creativity also to bilingual teachers, you know, really being able to build up kids within our system. I know we have some programming in our, like, future teachers and stuff, but I don't think all schools have that. And having to be able to be an innovative course or something that gives credit or certificate, either like certifications or credits or something to that degree, because I think we have a lot of resources in our kids.
We do have the teacher program, both teacher prep one and teacher prep two at all 12 of our high schools.
Fantastic. Was it Langham in the past, or has it always been there? Or is, oh, I think it's a student organization, maybe, that they didn't have.
Yeah, there are independent student organizations that can be formed outside of school. At this point, I believe we do have those at all 12 of our high schools as well.
Fantastic. Well done. Thank you. Super creative.
Gilbert.
Of course, I think it's great, so. As you know, there is an officials shortage here, and unfortunately for the pandemic, a lot of the officials, once we hit retirement age, we go into this field, because we can't compete hardly anymore at the rate we were used to. But there is a shortage, and then with pandemic hit, we lost quite a few. And then the weariness of getting out and mixing in with individuals was always something that created a lot of the shortage as well. Did I hear softball?
Yes.
Okay, good. Because softball and baseball, they're played year-round nowadays here, especially in our weather. Basketball is the same way. Football, I know quite a few teachers we have in our district and that do officiate. They're teachers somewhere else, but I'll see them at the middle school fields and stuff, officiating games and stuff, and as to help with their income, and they just like the sport as well. One thing you may find troublesome, maybe, is there, when you go into TASSO, you have to be four to five years removed from the school that you're associated with. So it took me five years before I could go back to Site Creek to officiate. So we can keep them in the district, but they'll be funneled over to, say, if they're on the Region Two side of Bridgeland or something, they'll be funneled over to the other side of the district and stuff, where they have no connections and stuff like that.
There are limitations, particularly to those sub-varsity and varsity games at the high school level.
Yeah, I can't see them at varsity games, that's very limited to a few of us. But the sub-varsity games is very promising, and the middle school games, absolutely. And the leagues around our area, too, they're in quite a shortage, and this could help a lot of the kids work theirselves through college and everything else and find a field and stuff that they like. I was thinking right now, Tom and others, and Debbie has explained, when there was a need for something else in the district, the ROTC came around, and that filled a big gap. I can see this as well, maybe not in the numbers of 800 or 900, but yes, filling a gap to help not only themselves, but the community as well that they go into and stuff like that. I think it's a great idea. And I'm always training younger officials. Younger officials right now are close to 30. I haven't had an official 16 or 17. I've never had that person to train at that age in basketball or volleyball and stuff, though. But it's promising, though. It's always a good start. We got to start somewhere. But I think it's going to be a great program.
Mr. Serabias, as Dr. Bergman said, it's very common to see them paired with an experienced official, so we hope to see some paired with you down the road.
Yes, we get them, I think, they give me like three middle school games a year, so I can be paired with them to make sure that the middle school games are getting proper training and stuff. And I go do my due diligence, three or four games a year with middle school games and stuff. But anything I can do to help, just let me know, and I'll be fine with it.
We'll also be looking for guest speakers with experience, so.
You know, that would be great, too, but yeah, that would be great, too.
Will you be teaching them how to eject spectators from the stands, though?
I was just going to say that, because I have no problem doing that. No problem.
I think that's part of the importance of pairing them with someone who is experienced. But communication skills are actually a part of the knowledge and skills for this course.
How to deal with unruly spectators is a part of this. And we know some unruly spectators.
Thank you for your presentation. Board, may we move this to consent agenda? Item 4N, consent agenda, Holly. 4O, the board will consider authorizing the superintendent-to-executor memorandum of understanding with Texas Women's University for speech pathology, field placement, questions only. Let me look to the left, Lucas. No, Debbie, Julie, Scott. May we move this to the consent agenda? 4O, Holly, consent agenda. 4P, the board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from bond funds to the recommended contractors, and authorize the superintendent or designated to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts as follows. 4P1, 2023 A-Robison and TIPS Elementary School renovation budget bond funds. 4P2, 2023 M-Robison ES renovation budget out of bond funds. 4P3, 2023 Postman Sampson Elementary School renovations budget and bond fund. We have extensive information in the board book, so this is questions only. Let me look to the right. Scott, any questions? Natalie, Gilbert to the left, Lucas, Debbie, Julie. So let me ask Jesse the standard question, and I call this the Debbie Blackshear question. So for these five campuses, are any of these involved in the floodplain? Do we have any concerns about flooding in these areas, and if we do, does the work we're doing address that?
Mr. Jackson, none of these campuses are in the floodplain, and we do not, none of these campuses flooded during Harvey. We do not have any concerns about flooding, and we don't have any flooding mitigation work planned for these campuses at this time.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
May we move 4P to the consent agenda? Holly, 4Ps on consent agenda. 4Q, the board will consider authorizing the superintendent-to-executor memorandum of understanding with the Region Four Education Service Center for teacher residency placement. We have 4Q, 4R, and 4S, there will be a combined presentation, so let me read 4R. The board will consider authorizing the superintendent to execute a memorandum of understanding with Sam Houston State University for teacher residency placement. Four S, the board will consider authorizing the superintendent to execute a memorandum of understanding with the University of Houston Downtown for teacher residency placement. There's that special word again. So we have a presentation. Dr. Stewart?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Jackson. Well, there's not much for me to say. I was going to share that we were going to combine the Q, R, and S, but you did that for us. And so we have an overview of the teacher residency program that will be shared by Jose Munoz and Sharita Franklin. Also with that, Dr. Blasingame, if it's allowable, the entire HR team, well, most of them are here and they're back there and they were texting me that they have all of that vacancy information that you need. And so if you would like for them to share that, they're all here and they can do that and answer that question. So at this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Sharita Franklin.
Thank you, Dr. Stewart. Dr. Henry, Board of Trustees, today's presentation will begin with connecting the teacher residency initiative to our board goals. Jose Munoz, HR Director of Talent, will then discuss what teacher residencies are and the reasons for implementing them. The teacher residency program supports our board goal to recruit, develop, and retain highly qualified and effective personnel. Mr. Munoz?
Good evening, Dr. Henry, members of the board and cabinet. Our role in human resources is to find the best teachers for our students that will drive student achievement. Before I begin, I'd like to share just a brief note about the teacher that made the most impact on my academic success, my high school calculus teacher, Ms. Dacus. Ms. Dacus not only was a great inspirer of students, but she had deep knowledge of her content area and was able to explain content in such a way that by the time I took my coursework in college, both at Texas A&amp;M and Rice, math was pretty easy for me. And that was because of all the work that, that's right, that Ms. Dacus had done. Now with the ongoing teacher shortage, how can we ensure that all CFISD students have a Ms. Dacus in their class? And so the purpose of my presentation today is to provide an overview at a high level of a program that accomplishes that objective and that will set us on that path. The pathway is a paid teacher residency program and is one of the recommend, recommended initiatives that were set out by the Teacher Vacancy Task Force that Governor Abbott put together earlier this year to address the ongoing teacher shortage. As you'll see later, an increased number of school districts in the Houston area are pursuing this initiative, so we thought it would be helpful for you to, and worthwhile for you to be aware of such initiative. So at its core, the teacher residency model is very much like a medical residency where residents practice under the supervision of an experienced physician, except here, the resident is paired with an experienced educator. Unlike traditional student teacher assignments that you all may be familiar with, the resident, the residency program is for an entire year and again, it is paid. So it is not just a semester, but for an entire year. The goals of the program are to ensure that teacher residents are ready on day one, but also that they continue year over year, right? Because we don't want them just to be here for one year, we want them to remain with us. According to the Teacher Vacancy Task Force, retention for residency program graduates range from 80 to 90%. Because of this, there are discussions at the state level about awarding a year of service to teacher candidates who complete their certification via a residency program. Paid teacher residencies support our stakeholders' needs. Over the past year, our team heard from our district leadership, campus principals, and prospective employees about the need to compensate candidates seeking their education, their educator certification. And to Dr. Blasingame's earlier comments in the meeting, this is particularly the case for bilingual education, special education, secondary math, and secondary English. We also received requests, lots of them actually, from the news media about what proactive steps are we taking as a district to address the teacher shortage. This initiative allows us to respond to our stakeholders. Paid teacher residencies also position CFISD to compete in the marketplace. On the supply side, we have a shortage of teachers. Universities are now requesting whether school districts will pay their students to complete their clinical teaching assignment. On the screen is an email from Texas State, which is the largest university-based teacher preparation program in Texas and one of the top five universities that our teachers come from. And again, essentially they're asking, okay, if our Texas State students go to Sci Fair, are they going to get paid? And if so, how much? More and more universities are making similar requests. In addition, there's high demand for top talent across the Houston area. The list on the screen includes the names of the school districts who are now implementing paid teacher residencies or are in the process of doing so. That number continues to rise. So again, not only do we have an issue of supply, we also have an issue of high demand, which means that there is really a premium on these students and us being able to compete for them to serve here in our district. Paid teacher residencies will play an integral part of our talent management strategy and will add to the list of our existing grow our own initiatives. I believe it was President Jackson earlier who made the comment about some of the work that we continue to do around our teacher and training program, our future educators as listed there. But we also, of course, continue to support just traditional student teacher placements as well as we have some new initiatives for creating pipelines for current employees, particularly paraprofessionals and those who serve in ancillary positions. And we also host community job fairs at local high schools that support this work, which, by the way, we have one this upcoming Saturday at Sci Park High School from nine to 11:00 AM. So if you're watching at home or you are, of course, you're all welcome to attend if you like to, to come. We, we are hiring at Sci Fair ISD. Again, grow our own initiatives are highly recommended by the Teacher Vacancy Task Force that I shared earlier. In closing, our district's goal is to ensure that we have the most qualified teacher in every classroom. Two of the findings from the Teacher Vacancy Task Force report is that teachers who complete a residency program and experienced teachers contribute more to students' academic growth. Of course, these findings, while they were released in 2023, are not new nor surprising. The high school teacher that I mentioned at the beginning, Ms. Dacus, had 15 years of teaching experience by the time I took her class. Each year, she sharpened her teaching toolkit to prepare for the next class of students, including me. The residency program that I outlined tonight allows our candidates to begin building their toolkit before starting their first year and make an immediate impact on our bottom line student achievement. That concludes the, my prepared remarks. If you have any questions, I'll take those and pass them over to Sharita.
I'll turn to my right, Scott.
No questions. Great job. Love the.
Very creative and I loved your shameless plug. We are hiring in CFISD. I have a question around exactly what looks different, who the candidate is between student teaching and residency. The Mistakers is helping coach preparations. What exactly is the difference in that person who becomes a candidate for one or the other? These are not teaching certified people, just degree people?
So these are folks, there are multiple pathways, but the pathway that we're focusing on specifically as we pilot the program are essentially college seniors who are in the process of getting their education certificate. The difference is that instead of just doing a semester-long assignment, they would be doing a full year. And the idea behind that, according to the task force and just sort of common sense, right, is that the more experience and exposure you have in the classroom, the more practical experience that you have, the more ready you're going to be on day one. I think it's also important to note that a lot of the universities are also shifting away from the traditional clinical teaching that is only a semester long and moving towards the full year residency. So it is important for us to stay ahead of the curve so that we're better prepared to make sure we have student teachers here in CFISD.
So what is the pay and are they in the same classroom as the master teacher? Or do they have their own set of students assigned to them?
So during the design year, which is the 2023-24 school year, we are working to set the pay for that work. And so the committee at the end of the year will determine both the stipend amount for the resident as well as the stipend amount for the mentor teacher, with the understanding that these mentor teachers are going to have a lot of work on their hands because of the commitment that they are going to accept in training this future educator for an entire year.
I think that's so promising. Dr. Henry came from Galena Park and I think these practices were under him there. Friend's dissertation was really seeing who were the outperformers in the region as far as language arts reading over time. Just didn't matter which testing program was in and they looked at trend data and it was Galena Park. And, and when she went in on her study to look at what the best practices were, they captured those young educators early. They got them in teaching kids by design and so that by the time they came to hire, they had many people ready to hire, but those people were also already great teachers. So I feel like this has really incredible promise and I'm super excited about your creativity. I love seeing one more box up there on teacher recruitment. Mr. Munoz, it was nice hearing from you for the first time up here.
Thank you.
Gilbert.
I think it's also a very promising program. It answers a lot of the wants that were asked of the board a couple of years ago. And I think it's really moving forward and staying ahead of the trend, as you say and stuff. Great job, guys. Great job.
To my left, Lucas.
My question's directed towards Karen. Karen, as we're in our budget cycle this year, the findings that they're going to produce for what would the budget be regarding stipends, et cetera? I'll be curious to see what our options are and how that lays into our hiring plans and what number of placements we can get for what value, et cetera. In general, very innovative. Thank you to our entire HR team. It is nine o'clock at night and we're getting to your topic. Thank you so much for staying with us.
You're a great team.
Yes. And anyway, I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Debbie.
Just a comment. Sorry, I turned it back off. Just a comment, what a great and creative solution to a problem we've been dealing with for a number of years now. Because I know as long as I've been on the board, we've never opened school with ever teacher vacancy filled. And I think this program could go a long way to helping us close that gap.
Julie.
When the Teacher Vacancy Task Force report came out, it's, it's fantastic. It's really well done. Teachers that were finally were able to participate really gave some good input. And there was some disappointment that nothing was done at the state level with the findings and the recommendations from that report. So I'm so proud that we are taking those findings and those recommendations and moving forward at the district level. Ideally, it would be funded by the state, but to Mr. Scanlon's point, we're going to have to find a way to fund it locally, but the return, the ROI is going to be significant. So thank you so much for the time and effort that you're putting into this. We appreciate you so much. We have such a strong HR department and I know that you all work hard every day to fill those positions and make sure people are prepared and that we're giving our students the very best teachers we can. So thank you.
Thank you.
I first learned about this program eight years ago when I went through Leadership Tasby and I spent a full day at inner school districts visiting with admin, but also trustees. And they explained this concept to me and I thought, this is absolutely wonderful. And then, of course, at my last Tassit Tasby conference, I made a point of going to two different seminars, one of which, of course, I had a couple of beautiful, well-educated ladies there at the table with me. I think it's very exciting. The district that I saw eight years ago and then I went to their presentation, they are in a protected county. People don't necessarily move there and if you're there, they don't have competition from other districts. Their, their district actually is the county. Whereas here, we can train these people, but the trick is being able to retain them knowing that every other district around us has a significant shortage. And I know that has to be part of the strategy when you put this together. I am also, you know, I'm going to be tickled when I sit out there and listen to you all open up the other pathways after you get this first one figured out and it's functioning because I think this can be dynamite, spending the full year not as a student teacher, but as a resident teacher. When I first heard the difference, I thought, how, how could it make a difference? But when I visited with those same people with Tassit Tasby, it was obvious. It makes a tremendous difference, an entire step up. Thank you for bringing it. Mark, thank you for bringing it to the board as well. And of course, Dr. Stewart, I've been waiting to, to see this unveiled and I'm tickled that you all are unveiling it tonight. So thank you ever so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board of Trustees, for your support.
So four Q, R, and S. May we move this to the consent agenda? Holly, four Q, R, and S to the consent agenda. You know, I will mention to HR that had to stay so long for the presentation, I suspect since I'm no, when I'm no longer at the lead microphone, all of these meetings ought to be shorter by about two hours. Four T, the board will consider approving the superintendent's recommendation to give notice to Christine Warren that her employment with the district under probationary contract is proposed for termination and authorize the president of the board to notify Ms. Warren of the proposed action pursuant to 21.104 of the Texas Educator Code. This item may be discussed in closed session pursuant to section 551.074. For you, the board will consider making a determination that a good cause did not exist as required by law for Rosa Barros, Joseph Flores, Savannah Gao, Paul Jerome, Foodenol, Jessica Milleran, Adriana Opere, Eileen Patterson, Diana Sanchez, Villa Franca, Margot Tidwell, Mariana Wright, Gisele Zietz, to reside in the respective employment contracts. This item may be discussed in closed session pursuant to section 551.074. I would like to thank everybody who is still here and is still watching at home for being here tonight. And I would also like to thank those watching from home as well. May I have a motion to move into closed session?
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? There is no discussion. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. We are in closed session. Y'all are more than welcome to wait for us to come out of closed session. We have to because we have to adjourn the meeting.
No action.
Ah. We will not return to open session tonight.